And we're live.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. This is the Town in Dewey Beach Monthly Town Council Meeting. It's being held at Dewey Beach Life Saving Station as well as via Zoom. It is Friday, January 31st, 2025 at 3:00 p.m. With that, I'd like to convene a Town Commissioners Meeting. Please remove your hats and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Roll call. Commissioner Bauer.
Present.
Commissioner Juzinski.
Here.
Commissioner Gibbings.
Here.
Commissioner Persinger.
Here.
Mayor Bill Stevens here, so we have a quorum. Next element is for adoption of the agenda. Before I ask for an adoption for a motion, there's been a request to move things around as well as there's been a request to eliminate a few things. What I am asking is that we go in the order of A, B, C, I, H, D, and G. E and F will are going to be eliminated from tonight's discussion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Are we going to cover it? Oh, did you have any revisions to it?
Oh, no, no, no.
Okay.
Which ones are eliminated?
E and F.
E and F.
It's one with on A, B, C, I, H, D, G. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, I get a motion for the approval of the prior meeting's minutes.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll ask for public comment from anyone for any of the non-agenda items in its new form. Is there any here for additional elements of public comment? Laura, anything on anybody raise their hand? Okay. So we'll move on to reports. Committee reports. Commissioner Bauer.
Nothing to report at this point.
Commissioner Persinger.
Climate Change Committee's next meeting is on March the 8th. And I don't know if it's my responsibility to report it, but planning is only is going to be on Tuesday, Tuesday evening at 5:00.
One more. Commissioner Gibbings.
The newly organized Finance Committee will meet on February 14th.
And Commissioner Juzinski.
The Infrastructure Committee had a good meeting yesterday. They approved subject to our recommended for our approval project on Jersey Street, which will be seen at the next meeting. And thanks to Mr. Zolper's efforts, as well as I believe it was Speaker Schwartz's call, we got some significant funding to help alleviate the cost. So it's basically a pretty cost-effective way to solve something on two different blocks that have flooding issues in Dewey. And they also recommended to us that we approve doing a full-on study of Van Dyke Street and the outflow and the drainage issues on Van Dyke State as well. And that will be coming to us as well.
Wonderful.
Okay.
Reports, Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Laura, if you could bring those photos up for me real quick. I just want to go through, it was at the beginning of the beginning of this month, but the snow that we had, several pictures, but what I'd like to do is just show how much snow came down on January 6th, which if you lived here, you saw it, but if you weren't here, you can see how much snow came down. Keep going through, Laura, if you would, please. My main point here is that our two maintenance folks were able to get out into this, January 6th, they started to plow. They plowed through 6, 7, and 8, and they also worked through the sidewalks. So I just wanted to point out the good job that Scott and Justin did and show you that. The next thing is a new sign board that we just got. This was a CTF-funded project through Representative Schwartz call for approximately $18,000 for that board. It's solar. We're going to be able to use that with the Police Department to try to help slow traffic during major events or just on big weekends during the summer by putting it at the north end or the south end of town to try to slow traffic and say, hey, crosswalks are ahead, slow down, speed limit is 25 miles an hour. So thank you, Representative Schwartz call, for that for that board. That was delivered this week. The next thing is just to kind of let people know what's going on around town. These are buildings that have been here for a while. It was coconuts and a number of different things, but Ivy is being demoed right now, and it should be done within two days. Next slide, please. And this is where the old grottoes was. They've got their permits. They've gone ahead and started their building. That'd be commercial on the bottom, residential on the on the top floors. And then I don't have any photos for this next one, but the projects on the sidewalks, the Center Islands, the bump outs, the driveways, and those are being worked on. A Del reports the northbound concrete project should be done in the end of February pending weather. And then they'll start on the southbound side, and they hope to have those done by March. The Center Island project, they hope to have done by the end of April. Commissioner Juzinski briefed on the Jersey Van Dyke projects that were recommended out of the Infrastructure Committee. We also had a briefing by the Army Corps of Engineers on our project on Reed Street for the flooding. And then today I got a call finally from the Realtor person that's part of the Army Corps of Engineers from Baltimore. He's going to send some paperwork over. We really have nothing that the Realtor has to buy or appraise at the end of that street. We own the end of the street. Del Dot owns the end of the street. Denrec owns the end of the street. But we still have some paperwork we have to fill out. So he called me today, sending the paperwork over. I'll start on that on Monday. We have approximately $800,000 right now in the infrastructure fund. It might be a little bit more than that, actually. I hope to have JMT and Beacon Engineering brief on February 21st on both those projects, the same PowerPoints they did yesterday to the Infrastructure Committee. Hope to have the Sunset Park Living Shoreline project briefed on the 21st by Center Island Bays. They're working, instead of working on Dagwarely Street, we're going to start working over on McKinley Street instead. And Center of the Island Bays did a did an update and a briefing to the Lions Club because the Lions Club has maintenance responsibility for that wetland at the end of McKinley Street. Sunset Park, the actual park itself, the $22,000 Denrec grant we got for that, that work may start sometime next week. I hope it does. And I'd like to say, like, over the last four years, the town has made some great strides. First, in public safety, response to the public when they reach out or they talk to me or somebody on my staff to respond back to them. We've made improvements in staffing. We've made improvements on pay, maintenance to the town, keeping it as clean as we can. I think to ask for a new town hall, but it's not just a town hall. It's a police station. It's an alderman court. It's where our parking people will be. It's where our paramedics will be. So we're putting all that into this new town, this new town hall. And I would, you know, just say, I think our employees work very hard. They serve the public, and part of that serving the public is in an environment that is conducive to getting them to serve the public. And that really goes for our Police Department because the majority of our new town hall project that's proposed, it really is the Police Department to keep us up to a certain standard, to keep our police officers in the town and not going to other jurisdictions that pay much more than ours. Lewis, right now, coming out of the academy, is at $76,000. Where are we coming out of the academy right now?
61.
61. And I dare to say, working in Dewey is a little harder than working in Lewis. If not, ask a police officer. So I would, I would just say, a new town hall for the next 30 to 50 years is no small investment, and I understand that. And I understand it's a lot of money. But I think we need to think ahead for the town. I think we need to to invest in the town. We have a lot of money that we can maybe touch. We have money we can't touch. We have about $8.5 million that we we have in reserves, 8.5 million, but we really can't touch that because held by charter and where our general fund policy is. So we have some some funding there. I'm hoping that we're able to free up maybe $900,000 from the unassigned account, but that will be up to the Commissioners. So with that, pending any questions, Mr. Mayor?
I don't have any. We'll get in, we'll get deep into town hall in about 20 minutes.
Okay.
Chief.
Hello, everyone. So our 2024 Police Annual Report is out. I'm not going to go over it. It's a pretty long report. It is out on our Facebook page, our should be on our town page soon, and it's on the Police Department page. So just some highlights from our report. The Police Department received $307,000 in grant funding, which helped purchase different types of equipment, mostly for equipment. And the grants were obtained through Office of Highway Safety, Delaware Offices of the Secretary, DEMA, BJAG, Sussex County, Denrec, and Energize Delaware. And this is listed in detail on the report if you want more information on it. During this year, we partnered with Fenwick Island, Dagspurrow, Oceanview, and South Bethany, and created the Sussex County Southeast Regional Police Accountability Committee, which is required by law. There's more information on that also on the report. We were involved in a lot more community policing events this year. We had our first Public Safety Day, which turned out really well. We're involved in all kinds of Halloween events, Toys for Tots, Stuff a Truck, Special Olympics torch runs, and other events. So we are trying to get out there more and be involved in more community policing events. Our officers completed 1,666 hours of various training. This, of course, does not include our firearms training that we do three times a year and our academy recruit training. We do have a recruit in the academy right now who's scheduled to graduate St. Patty's weekend. And there's a various list of all the trainings we've had on this report. This year, we had to retire K-9 Jasper for medical issues, and we were able to replace him with K-9 Odin, and his information is also on the report. We've upgraded our dispatch system to a computer-aided dispatch system, which alleviated all the paper binders and stuff that we did all our reporting in. So that has helped us greatly. And then we will be going to a new radio system, hopefully by the springtime, when some of our grant funding is released to us. I had, there's a long list of goals that were reached in 2024 that we wanted to do that we put in our last year's report, so those are all on there. And our stat sheet for the year for 2024, we had 6,319 calls for service. We wrote 2,112 traffic tickets as well as warnings. We had 602 parking tickets. We handled 92 accidents. We had 21 DUIRS, 159 criminal arrests, adults, 14 juvenile arrests, 216 warrant arrests, and we did 3,269 hours of traffic enforcement throughout the year. Currently, we are interviewing for our seasonal program this year. We have already done about 15 interviews. We're looking to hire 14, and I still have applications coming in, so we're doing very well. We're already starting on that process, working on backgrounds, and we're probably going to start training for our seasonal officers. We're mixing it up a little bit this year and doing a lot of it on the weekends, and they'll be prepared to go for Memorial Day weekend. So that's about it for me. I'll bring up town hall stuff later when we get to that.
Great, thank you. Any questions for the chief? Next, Carol Everhart from the Dewey Beach Chamber of Commerce.
That's right.
There she is. Yes, definitely.
Thank you. Okay. My report's pretty brief. I want to start with occupancy, because that's always the question, how are we doing? How are we doing? Well, if we look at overall, 19971 zip code, which really goes from the middle of the Indian River Bridge, okay, out to Midway, that big rectangle, yeah, that triangle, that is the 19971. In 20, now, this is just hotels and motels, okay? In 2023, in that zip code, you had between January 1 and close to the end of December, you had 99,363 occupied rooms. Same timeframe in '24, you had 99,469, so it was up a little bit. When I look at the Saturdays, same timeframe, 129,985 in '23, and in '24, 127, slightly down, probably short-term rentals, most likely, which is going to take me right to short-term rentals, okay? Of course, the bill went through, so the short-term rental is in effect as of January 1, 4.5%. They need a business license. If they have questions, I can try to help. There's been a lot of calls to the state, and the information I get back is it's a little bit difficult to get what they want to know. Does not impact your local tax, okay? The biggest problem has been the paid medical family leave. So that's the PMFLA. It went into effect. The problem is it went into effect, but it seems as though the state was not ready for the questions that were going to come. So there's been a lot of back and forth over that, but it is in effect, and you do need to follow through. They can call me, I can try. Been successful in some cases. Your 1925 visitor guide is done, is at the printer. We expect it back in about two weeks. The Chamber hosted a general membership meeting at the Cambria. I think Bill was there for that. Brian Mack and Chris Kelly with the Business Development Delaware Prosperity Partnership was there to speak. The next general membership meeting for the Chamber is February 26th, and it's at the Lighthouse Cove here, okay? It's a noon luncheon. The Chamber's next business after hours is February 12th at Palm Beach Grill, that's in Midway. The March business after hours is, we all know where that's at, that's at the Star Room, okay? That's March 13. 2025 budget for the Chamber is done, approved, we're working, we're in process, it's happening. Chamber's 25 advertising plan is approved and underway. The 2025 event schedule has been finalized. The posters and ticklers are in print right now. And the 2024 traffic count, and I don't know if everyone knows this, but we work with Del Dot, call in, they give us a count, okay? It's divided between, let's say, places on Route 1 coming into Dewey and coming into Mahover. We just take that and use a formula. It's very simple. We use a very low 1.2 persons per vehicle, and in those spots, we can come up with an estimated number of visitors to the area. We take out a third because that's your net, you're coming in. And other than that, installation's going to be March 20th. I don't know where yet, but I know you have on the agenda, I believe, your Volunteer of the Year. That will be announced at that time. Any questions? Love it. Okay, thank you.
We're easy.
Thank you, Carol. Good information.
Phil, I'd ask our Town Manager, I know that there were several emails concerning the the accommodation, the accommodation tax setup, and I know we have some issues with VRBO. Can you just give a summary answer to the outcome of that?
Yeah, and if I miss something, Laura's also got additional information on that. But as of last week, VRBO had gone ahead and added back in the the 3% of the town. They had taken it out when the state had done the 4.5%, and that had caused some issues for a number of different people in town that rent with VRBO. But as far as I, I saw the emails the other week from some of the local citizens that copied me on them. Laura, is that correct?
Yes, they've definitely added it back, and they will be collecting it on behalf of of the homeowners, so then the homeowners will be able to pay that 3% to us without having to adjust their rental fees.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Can we have a couple right away, too?
I don't, I don't know that.
All right. Moving on, before we get into the meat of the agenda. If I could have, we, as I, when I do find out that we've lost one of our own, I do like to point it out and ask for a moment of silence for Amy Lynn Schubert. I think I pronounced that correctly, Schubert, that she passed away this past week after Thank you. All right, on to number three. From an agenda perspective, the first is the review of December 2024 financials. Ms. Hall, for an overview, and then any questions of council and/or of the public?
Good evening. We're almost into February, so I've almost, I've got some insight onto January numbers. Commissioner Persinger asked me to give you a little bit of insight into beach tax because you never see that until the audit. As of the end of December, what is in Brown Advisory for the beach tax is roughly $6.5 million. Sitting in Community Bank is $100,000. Roughly $200,000 is billed each year, and with the current beach cleaning contract, roughly $50,000 is paid out of that for beach cleaning. So $150,000 will go into Brown Advisory to be reinvested. Now, on to the operating account. Transfer tax, wow, people are still, it's amazing. With the December sales, we've received those funds in January, and we are over $800,000 that we have received. I have not seen the January sales yet, so we have done great. We've still got three more months of sales. That'll get us. Accommodations tax with the January receipts, we've made the revised budget of $825,000. Hotel tax, with the projections I'm seeing, it's going to put us roughly $250 below the revised budget of $475,000. Rental licenses, the front office is doing a great job, is still collecting from the people who have not paid the rental licenses for this year. Commercial licenses, while July was through the current year have been roughly on par for where we see the past couple of years. June was exceptionally low, not sure why. We have not made up the difference. I noticed that we're not going to, we did make the revised budget of $315,000. The original budget of $397,000, it wouldn't, no way came close to that. One thing I did notice, thanks to Laura's looking at the numbers, we had 89 fewer out-of-town small business licenses and 87 fewer out-of-town large business licenses purchased. Those two together make up roughly $56,000. Now, that's out-of-town businesses just not coming into town to do business. Not sure why. Don't know if they went, you know, just chose not to do business here or what. The building permits, steady as always, they have made the budget, the projected budget was still a couple of months to go. Right now, before any closing entries, before even finishing January, just a very rough estimate and still looking at about $500,000 surplus at this point, and we will have to fund, we'll have enough to fund the capital expenditures that we've presented for one, two, or three years, depending on what the Commissioners would like to do. Fund the rainy day fund, depending on how you want to do it. As I started this, is stated this a rough estimate. I haven't done any closing entries. I was just looking at numbers, but it gives you a starting point. Something else that you should know, as I was looking through numbers, there's 1.4 million that is operating funds, has nothing to do with beach tax. It is sitting in Brown Advisory. It is operating money that was put there to sit as a savings account. Since April of this year, it has only made $16,000. If it was in Community Bank earning 4%, it would have made more than that. But it's just sitting there. So you have 1.4 million that could be used for anything.
Isn't that the rainy day fund?
No, sir. That.
We have, we have a bad miscommunication because it's been my understanding for many months that that 1.4 is the lion's share of the rainy day fund.
No, sir. All the rainy day fund is sitting in Community Bank. That is just extra money that is just sitting there, savings.
I, I think we need to talk that through. Is that, that was not my understanding. When we created the rainy day fund, the intention was to take that money at Brown Advisory, that money that had built up from surplus budgets, budget surplus over the years, and to apply that and create the rainy day fund. So I mean, I really need to see that on paper somehow because that is very different than my understanding.
Yes, sir. I will gladly, I can gladly sit down with you on that, but it is, the rainy day fund is in Community Bank.
So can I ask some questions? You can. I just, before that, I just want to clarify that from, we've gotten, we've gotten better. We continue to get better. We're going to have, obviously, a major conversation in about 25 minutes concerning the town hall, and nowhere from the, from our perspective, none of this would be based upon borrowing from anything that's outside of general funds available to us, meaning beach fund, rainy day fund, et cetera. All those would be held true.
Correct.
Given Commissioner Persinger on where the numbers are, because if that's the unassigned fund, I understand.
That's what I was going to ask, if it was the unassigned fund.
No, this is, it has, this is just extra money that you only see at the audit. It has.
There's never, in my picture, extra money.
It doesn't get reported until the audit.
Is it reviewed at the Investment Committee meeting on a quarterly basis?
Yes, it, on the, when, every month, when the Brown Advisory reports, it's 8022. If you look at that, it is, has $1.4 million.
That's a huge and hopefully welcome surprise.
Yes.
Let's assume it's not there for now.
Yeah.
Until we get this figured out, okay?
Okay.
All right. Any questions, Ms. Hall? Thank you, Sheena. I'm sorry, Bill, did you have additional questions?
No, it was just the the unassigned fund. I wanted to make sure that wasn't part of the unassigned fund. I want to make sure she's got.
All right. Item B, discuss a possibly vote to appoint Sally Silver to the Marketing Committee. Commissioner Bauer?
I think she'd be a terrific asset, and I'd like to get the Marketing Committee back rolling again, so.
Is she potential chair?
She is.
Okay.
And I would only add to that, the impetus for this was from the Climate Change Committee. We're trying to get them to coordinate a little better in terms of their kind of public education messages we're putting together with respect to climate change and flooding issues and that sort of thing. The marketing folks have the expertise there, so having the committees to go there.
Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item B, discuss a, oh, C, discuss a possibly vote to approve membership for the Climate Change Committee. Commissioner Persinger?
We have, we have revisited the membership of the Climate Change Committee. We want to reauthorize the the membership. Deborah Goldenberg will continue as chair, and she has approved the following list of members, Kelly Baxter, Dave Davis, Courtney Estes, Mary Jepore, Liam McDermott, Sally Silver, and April Wells. So I would like to propose, I move that we approve this list of members, including the the current chair.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's also unanimous. Moving on to I, discuss a possibly vote on Dewey Beach Volunteer of the Year. Mr. Zolper.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Over this past year, we've seen some real changes in the beautification of Dewey Beach, and one of those is Dewey in Blue. Well, I was a little skeptical at first because I thought we would, I thought we would have a lot of mischief done on those planters around town, sometimes during our active nightlife. Sometimes people do some things when when they're down here. But we didn't have that problem. We had one that was turned over all year, and it's a, it's a great project that went through. It's added beauty to the town. It's added something nice to look at on the corners. The community has rallied around that, and they've worked, you know, very hard, not only in the, in the spring, the summer, and through the winter right now, there's, they've got plants in there. So Patrice Gancy was the leader of that. She did a great job with Dewey in Blue. She stepped to the plate. She coordinated it with a lot of other volunteers. She communicated well. She worked hard. She organized, and it's been a success. She had about 46 people that she rallied around town to do the different boxes. So as Town Manager, I think she she would deserve to be our Volunteer of the Year.
I echo the same sentiment. She was terrific, and.
She did a great job.
I think we could all say here now that this thing ended up being way bigger than we ever thought it was going to be, so.
And hopefully bigger again this year. So I'd support her.
Any questions? May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
On to number H. Discuss a possibly vote to approve a bid submission for the construction of the new town hall and police station project. I don't expect this to be a quick process. So, Mr. Zolper?
Yeah, as I, as I said, when you asked me to make some comments earlier, I think the town's in a really good place right now. Commissioner Persinger and I have just, you know, when I got here, they were working on the general fund policy, and then with the help and some guidance from our, from our auditor at that time, the general fund policy was put in. And we have a little bit over six months' worth of expenses set in there. About 2.5 million that is set aside that that we can't touch. And then we have another six, a little bit over 6 million that we have in the, in the beach fund. That gives us 8.5 that we have that we won't touch for any reason for building of the new town hall, police station, alderman court, and the Sussex County paramedic station. But you look at the the possibility of money that the town will not have to. But you look at the, the possibility of money that the town will not have to put in this. We have $4 million, three of it from a community investment grant from the state, another million dollars in a bond budget grant that gives us $4 million. And if we move forward with the Sussex County paramedics, the county's agreed to give us another million. We can always revisit the county and see if they're, they're willing to put in more money, but right now, that's a million. So that's $5 million that nobody in the town directly has to put into this, to this project. That's, that's a lot of money. If you think about it, one of our surrounding towns is building a lifeguard station, it's a very nice lifeguard station, for 5.7 million. We're looking at building a town hall, Alderman Court, police station, Sussex County paramedic station, for roughly 11 million. So I, I think that we have an opportunity here. If, if we go through our finances, and we look at the finances, and we make some decisions, and if we do decide to use a type of fund that's there, it would be a one-time use of that fund, and then the next year, we would, we would go back and refund. So just for an example, if we did use what Sheena talked about, this, this, this fund, or the unassigned fund, which has about $900,000 in it right now, it would be used for the town hall one time, and then starting the next year, we would start replenishing that unassigned fund. The other thing I'd like to say is, through the commissioner's vote on a resolution, half of the hotel tax, and it's approximately $475,000 this year, half of that right now goes into a fund for the town hall. If we decide to borrow $3 million, which is our cap by charter, at 4%, it's around $18,000 a month for 20 years. That 475,000, if that's where we stay, half of that would pay for that monthly bill going through for the next, for the next 20 years. So we, we have the ability, I think we, we have a really good team right now, I think the town's in a really good spot. We're not talking about raising anybody's taxes, because basically, besides the beach or punishment taxes
There are no taxes.
There, there are no taxes, right? So I think when somebody makes that, that statement, there, there really isn't. Will parking be raised? If we weren't building this town hall, we'd probably have to raise parking just to make budget on our 2026 expenses. And it would go to match Rehoboth, and then the only other thing we would raise would be the penalties that go, that go along with it. And just real quick about parking, when I took over parking, if you parked illegally, it paid for parking, it forgot to put the Charles Lincoln, or some, you messed up in putting the tag number in there, you got a full penalty of $40. I looked at that and I said, now, they, they parked legally, they paid for parking, they should be able to, to explain that to us and have our parking people look into it, and if that's the case, then we just have a $5 admin fee, there is no more penalty for that. And it's going over very well with, with the public. When they can prove that, hey, we paid for parking, we parked legally, we just put in the wrong tag number. So I think when we look at where we're going with finances and how we're raising money to make the 2026 budget, separate from paying for the town, those are two separate things. And, and again, I go back to, we have the opportunity right now with $5 million that we've gotten from outside sources. I'll be putting in again for the community reinvestment grant, it opens up on February 10th. We won't know until June or July if we actually receive any money from that or the bond bill, when I put that, that money in. I think this gives the police department what they need. There are no frills in this building. There's no big stairways and glass sides of the building like we see in some of the other town halls that are around us. This is a very Spartan building, it just gets the job done, and it does have some room if we need to expand up on the, in the attic space, as of right now, for the next 30 years. So I really hope that the commissioners consider it, and that we can find the money to pay for the building. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
One thing that I'd like to, just to reiterate what, what Bill had said, or just to clarify, any change that we might be making to operating income, such as parking or for fines, has nothing to do with this conversation.
Right.
That's just about that, part of the operating budget, which is something that we'll review in February. As Bill alluded to, we have roughly $5 million of not our money that we have towards the town hall, that we didn't anticipate when, when we started this process over two years ago. We've also put over 2.2 million into the capital improvement town hall, which is net of the architectural fees, and we have right now an unassigned fund of 932,000. That will be depleted probably by 300,000 to 400,000 before the end of this fiscal year, I assume, because we don't have any revenue coming in. That's my guess, it's right there. So we have roughly $10,800,000 that could be used if there was a loan, a $3 million loan, that the town can do as part of its charter, as Bill alluded to, we do have, assuming that the revenue from the hotel tax does not go away, we do have the ability to have that debt service. And I'd just like to remind everyone, it wasn't too long ago that the town put $1 million into the Bayard Street pumping station to help Bayard Street, and this is a town hall that's gonna help, help the whole town. It's not just about, it's not random flooding, unfortunately, is, is really bad flooding that we continue to see on Reed. The one thing I'm gonna ask before we open up, for any commissioner's comments, and also for, for public policy, is I did have a conversation with the chief, I believe that was yesterday, and the chief had made a comment to me about accreditation. Could you expand upon what it means from an accreditation, what the facility and accreditation have to do with each other, and those implications?
So for accreditation, you have to meet certain standards, there's about 110 standards you have to meet. Currently, our building, as far as when you have a holding cell, you have to have sight and sound separation between adult males, adult females, and juveniles can't even be put, for the most part, in a cell. They have to be in, like, a separate type soft interview room, not handcuffed, depending on the crime. We don't meet that standard at all. Our facility, as far as a prisoner being able to, if they get into a fight with an officer, let's say they're being, they're, they put in the cell and they have to be processed, which is the next door over, and something happens, they can easily hit the push bar and run out and be an escapee. They can do the same thing, they can go into the town hall side, they can come down the hall, we have no separation between our holding room and the rest of the department, which is all civilians, the dispatchers, we're all in a small area, so a prisoner can come down there and attack one of the dispatchers or the administrative assistant. We have that bench on the upper floor, which is a very steep flight of steps, which is also used to, if we have to, we have to put a, take a prisoner up there. So if you have a disorderly prisoner that's possibly intoxicated, you have to get him up that flight of stairs, and then you put him on the bench there. So it's not a secure facility. That's very important for accreditation, to meet accreditation standards, you'd have to make a bunch of adjustments, add walls, add different locking mechanisms, add, add different things. We don't have a sprinkler system. There are just various issues within our department. So if we couldn't certify, I'm assuming the penalties, because this is the state law that we have to certify, would be decertification, or, or we wouldn't be able to apply for grant money. So there's certain things and monies attached being certified, and we just, we're not there. I would like Lieutenant Dempsey to speak on the building, because he's been here 24 years, and he's dealt with some of the issues with prisoner escapes and stuff like that. So if you could talk about that cliff a little bit, and just, it's the kind of stuff we deal with to make what we have work.
So accreditation does not mean that we can no longer have a police department, it means that we can no longer have the funding at the state level associated with our police department?
Yeah, but possibility, I don't know if the law, if we would be decertified if we can't meet accreditation standards. Not sure on that. Possibility.
Every police department under what we call DPAC is required by 2027 to be Delaware State Certified Law Enforcement Agency. Other agencies like Rehoboth and Bethany Beach, they go above and beyond with what's called Kalia, it's a national accreditation. But the, the state's goal is to get every police department in Delaware up to a minimum standard of 110 policies that we must meet. With those policies comes the, the scrutiny of our police stations, and it's, it's, it's a challenge, especially for little towns like Ellendale, Daggsboro, us, you know, we don't have the holding facilities, so we're trying to work, do workarounds, but, you know, in our case, it is going to be construction. I mean, we're gonna have to build walls, we're gonna have to include sprinkler systems in the cell, we're gonna have to do control accesses on all of our doors that don't have them in the cell area. So we're, we're working diligently, trying to get this done as fast as we can. You know, as for the police department, in my time there, five escapees, I think, and we apprehended all of them, but, you know, in, in our new police department, it's gonna be almost impossible to escape. I mean, you're gonna have the Sally Port, which could hold overflow prisoners, obviously, sometimes when we have, you know, 10, 15 prisoners at a time. We're, we're well inadequate here, but with, you know, just the Sally Port alone, we can set up an area out there to put the overflow prisoners, the nonviolent offenders, out there, and then utilize the cells for the violent offenders. The, the police department's built like a house. I mean, it, it was constructed like a house that we live in, it's not a commercial structure where a police department belongs. So, you know, with the addition of all the technology we're getting, we're gonna have processing included with the cell area, so the officers, it's gonna be turnkey, walk into a door, everybody is in one room. The communication center is, is very important for us, it's a heartbeat. Right now, they're operating, you know, out of a room, is, you know, with the square footage of these tables here, and, and the equipment that's gonna be required later on, you know, with our new CAD system and all the computer screens, they, they need the room, they need the file space, and which now they don't have. Any questions?
Can I make a comment here? So in 2019, the commissioners asked Captain Warren to come down to do an analysis of the police station. This was the analysis back in 2019. The chief has made great strides to correct these, but his findings found a number of places. It appears the police facility is inadequate, square footage, the building itself has some safety issues with mold possibly in the system. I've done mold eradication at least once in the building in the four years that I've been there. But Captain Warren put together several reasons why the current building we're in is not safe for the public, the police officers, and the administrative folks that work in there. So I think, again, with this new town hall police station, we have an opportunity to address some of those shortfalls that he found in this study that was asked for by the commissioners.
And, and if I may just say one more thing, I don't know how in-depth, I haven't been at all these meetings, but how in-depth we've gotten into, you know, the Sussex County paramedics being right next to us. I mean, we have seen in the past three years since they've been here, their response time is amazing. We would, we, our challenge, you know, on a busy Friday and Saturday, you know, if they're north of town, they're not getting in. Route 1's gridlocked, they cannot move traffic. So, you know, with this, with them creating the paramedic station in town, it's not only gonna service our community, it's gonna service everything south of us, because they can't get through that traffic to get to the inlet, to get to northern Bethany Beach if the other paramedics are tied up down there. So, you know, just having them next door, the, the asset just in that is amazing, so. Thank you.
Question for you.
Yes, sir.
Two things, when we were originally designed, two things were talked about, which, you know, remember, we talked about the bulletproof glass, if they needed.
Yes, sir.
We also talked, maybe not about the certification, but there was definitely a discussion on the separate police elevator being a major safety issue. So I know that there's a proposed, potentially accepting some of the alternatives to get rid of those things, but I want to understand how it affects the certification and how it affects the safety issues.
So the, the elevator's gonna be a workaround, we're, we're gonna have the right policy, and very strong policy on how we handle that elevator. When, when do we use the elevator, when do we not use the elevator? An elevator in our career, in our, our occupation is, is a hazard, it definitely is a hazard. But, you know, we understand that, that if we need to have this elevator, we're gonna use it, so.
I understand, you think the elevator causes more, I thought the elevator was to make it safer.
Oh, it's gonna make it safer, but when you're walking in a door from the first level into a first level with a prisoner, you only have that threshold to crap to cross. Now we're putting a prisoner in an enclosed box with a police officer that's armed, and, you know, so we're gonna have to have strict policies on how we handle that. You know, a second floor and elevator, it's not ideal in our world, but we understand that this is the way the building has to be constructed, so we're, we'll get around it.
I guess I'm a little bit confused.
Yeah, I am too.
That they're getting rid of the elevator?
That's one of your
That I'm not aware of, I didn't know that was a discussion.
Yeah, to answer that, I can answer that question. So the, the elevator that we would use for the police department depends on the circumstance. Let's say we had a prisoner in a wheelchair, we would use the elevator. If we have a disorderly prisoner that's causing us a lot of problems, or, you know, can't walk because they're so drunk, an elevator would be a good option versus having them to have to climb stairs. And also, that elevator will be used to bring in, you know, stuff into the building. It's a, it's a freight elevator, so when ammunition comes in and heavy items, the elevator's gonna be used to get it up to where it needs to be, instead of people having to carry it up the stairs.
Part of the reason why there was a disconnect is, in the previous meeting, I think we were told we needed a second elevator for, to be safer. Do you
I know, we called it, I just know it's one of the, deleting that second elevator is one of the alternative cost reductions.
Right.
And so I guess the question there is if that elevator were to be eliminated, is there an issue with certification?
Uh, there's not gonna be an issue, well, the issue is the steps. For carrying an unruly, disorderly person up a set of steps is a very challenging thing in our world. That elevator will eliminate that, but then there's also some challenges of safety in an elevator with a prisoner in a locked box. You might as well be in the holding cell.
So there isn't a clear requirement that you have to have
No, it's not a clear requirement.
No.
There's, there's just multiple options, depending on, each, each prisoner in each situation is different. But you have to keep in mind, though, if we do have a disabled prisoner and we have to get him, how are we gonna get him up the stairs? So the elevator's the option for us to do that. It's also the option to give heavy items into the building. It's very difficult when you're bringing ammunition and different things and you don't have a freight-style elevator, to bring items like that in. I've worked at other agencies, and I worked at the courthouse in Maryland, prisoners, the, the jail cell was on the bottom, the prisoners were transported there and to appear in court, they went through an elevator, get up to the courtrooms.
Let me just net it out, you're the chief.
I am.
Do we need the elevator, or do we not need the elevator?
I, I say we keep the elevator, I think it's an important thing to keep.
That's what we need to get, so. And then, the second question is the proposal to eliminate the glazing, bulletproof glazing on glass, was a cost saving?
$60,000 cost saving this.
So that was put out there as a potential alternative, and I just need to understand that impacts your safety as well as certification.
Well, you never want to get rid of bulletproof glass for safety, for, if someone comes in there with a loaded weapon and starts shooting, that's gonna protect the people that are behind the glass.
So you don't want either of those options?
No, absolutely not.
Absolutely.
That's what I need to understand.
Okay, but, but they're in the, they were, the bidders were asked to bid on those. So, you know, if they're not something that you want to do, why'd you put them in there?
So, so we, when you walk into the building, all areas that you're gonna have to deal with, with our, with our folks, the public will. When they go to the police station and they walk in, there's a bulletproof, there's bulletproof glass with a banker's box. When you go to the parking department, there's bulletproof glass with a, with a banker's box. The whole first floor, and Dean can explain it from GMB, is all bulletproof and bullet-resistant. The windows that are gonna be about seven and a half to eight feet above the, above the ground, because we're FEMA plus three in this building, those are, those windows are all gonna have a glaze on them that will provide protection if somebody should shoot or try to shoot at those windows. Now, the people on the inside of the building will be beneath those windows somewhat, but there's still that opportunity. So if we take away the glazing, it's called, on all those windows, we would save $60,000. We're not talking about the bulletproof glass that protects the dispatchers, our parking people, and our admin people. Or the Alderman Court upstairs also has that. That's all included that went out in the bid.
So this glazing is just visual, it's not
The glazing's different, if you need more information on that, Dean could provide it to you, Commissioner, but that's the way I understand the glazing.
Why would it be called ballistic glazing? It's visual.
Dean, could you explain that?
Yes, and so, Bill, the way you described it's all correct statement. Ballistic glazing is a technical term, just differentiated from typical glazing. It has to add a protective film into it, as well as an insert that helps make it ballistic rated, so that's why they call it ballistic-rated glazing. The only piece missing from this conversation, it was an alternate to exclude ballistic glazing, but then to substitute it with that a bullet-resistant glass block. So even though you're taking out the ballistic-rated glazing, you're getting a substitute of glass block that can resist bullets in its place. So that's what the cost represents for that.
So it's not a change in the protection, it's change in how the protection is?
Correct.
Okay.
Instead of having clear glass, you're gonna have a glass block if we take the glazing away.
All right, before we get into the details, line by line, based upon what you heard from the town manager and the chief, does council have any questions before I open it up to the public?
Yes.
I'm gonna have a lot to talk about, so, yeah, go ahead, Commissioner.
Just lost it, of course. First of all, just a comment, I, you know, I think I certainly have been convinced for some time, and probably the other members of the council, that we need a new, a new town hall facility and that it's been very clear. I mean, I was here when the Warren report was done and it was very clear that we couldn't meet the standards that were recommended there. I know the town has tried to put some Band-Aids on and accommodate some of those recommendations that were in the Warren report, but there was simply no way that we could satisfy all of those. So we need a new facility. The question for me is, and we talked a little bit about numbers, while I believe we need to do this, the financial picture for doing it is pretty murky for me at this point. I think we've had a bit of confusing conversation about the existing surplus that we have now. Again, there was this huge surprise to me about $1.4 million, which is sitting with Brown Advisory that we have not allocated to something, and so we need to track that down. This is also a little hard to do outside the context of the next year's budget that we're going to improve as well. It's sort of hard to see, you know, what we're going to be using in terms of adjustments to some of our revenue streams and have a balanced budget for next year and at the same time have the funds necessary to support the cost of the town hall. I want to ask a couple of questions. It looks like, you know, as the town manager said, we have been contributing half of the hotel tax over the last couple of years to the capital improvement fund for the town hall. It appears to me that we have and will have by the end of this fiscal year spent on the development of this project about as much as we've contributed over the past two years. Is that a fair statement?
Approximately $300,000 on the development of the building, if that's what you're referring to.
Okay, yeah. And so we still have some continuing costs though with, perhaps with GMB, but certainly with, I believe, Code Solutions. And the intent here is to have someone to monitor.
The expertise that we don't have while the building is being built, Dave Naples will do that.
So I would like to know more about what the projected costs are for Code Solutions and any continuing involvement of GMP, GMB, because that has to be paid for from somewhere. You know, if it comes out of the town hall fund, then, you know, we need to know how much that is and we need to have that accounted for. There's also, the other question I wanted to ask, there's a, the code enforcement building has to be demoed and we had an exchange of emails about that, and it appears that the town is going to bear the cost of that. But again, it has to be paid for from somewhere and it's not clear to me where that money is going to be coming from. With respect, and we'll come back to this, I'm sure, in greater detail, but with respect to the available surplus, put the $1.4 aside for a second and assume that that is in fact money that is swallowed up somewhere else. Any surplus that we're looking at right now, I think we have to be a little bit careful about because there are some year-end expenditures when we don't have much in the way of income stream. And according to our fund balance policy, and just for those of you who aren't familiar with fund balance policy, we created about, three or four years ago, as part of our general fund balance policy, we created what we call a rainy day fund. And in that rainy day fund is six months of operating expenditures. Each time we increase operating expenditures, we have to add 50 cents to that rainy day fund. We have just increased, in our amended budget for this year, we made a big increase in our operating expenditures and we have a further increase projected for next year. So not only are our operating expenses going up, but our requirements for our, within our fund balance policy for the rainy day fund also has to go up. So a lot of that surplus, whatever is generated, is going to be eaten up by satisfying the rainy day fund balance requirements. So, you know, based on the projections that the town did for us some time ago and some updates, I think we're probably, with the projected surplus for operating funds this year, I think we'll be able to cover what we need for satisfying the rainy day fund requirements for next year. So again, that kind of shifts us back to what other resources do we have? That's where the picture gets a bit murky for me. There have been, I think we also have to talk about the potential cost reductions, the alternatives that were included in the bidder's package. You know, it's, again, it's, if those options, those alternatives are viable, or if there's something that the town is willing to pursue, you know, if we need to reduce costs, then I see no reason why we shouldn't adopt those. So I'll stop there on my own.
So before I start, I want to just understand how you want today to work. Do you want us to finish our discussion and then ask for public input and then go into a motion, or do you want us to finish our discussion, make a motion, do public input?
Well, I think we all have ideas or opinions that we've written down that we want to discuss here. I understand what Gary's perspective is right now. I'd like to hear from each of the commissioners. And so as the baseline opinion, then hear from the public, who we represent, and then come back to how we're going to, what goals would we like to achieve today if we can achieve them?
So you don't want to go into detail?
I don't want to get into carpet.
That's what I mean. Yeah, that's what I wanted to know. So I wanted to just understand which. Okay, so I want to talk about the selection of vendor choice. I want us to be clear that this isn't just a price due and discussion on vendor, that there's other things. So I really want to go through the vendors who responded and their qualifications and comparing them. Like Gary, I want to go through the alternatives. I'm all for saving money, but I don't want us to be kind of foolish and people talking years later, why in the world did we do that, right? Where either causes a problem visually, aesthetically, or operationally over time. So I just want us to be a little bit judicious about that. And I would say, let me see here, we don't have, and I want to talk about fixtures and furnishings that understand where we are there, and I want to talk about borrowing the money and how those numbers were arrived. And I guess those are the things I want to talk about in detail.
Okay. Creating a detailed list. Commissioner Gibbons?
I have been of the position that what we have is inadequate for all staff that make this town run, for our police, for our administrator firm, Alderman, for building, and I want us to figure out a way to make it happen.
Commissioner Bauer?
Yeah, well, I mean, it's been a long road to get here. Looking back, this started in 2015 when we bought the land. Originally, this police station was going to be inside the Hyatt, the town administration. And then we've received monies of $37,500 a year since then, so we didn't build a town hall inside the Hyatt. And so we've had that money that, you know, it's been sitting there. So I think that this is a good opportunity to use the money that it was intended for. And I know it's booked, you know, it's in a general fund, so whether I move it from here to here, it doesn't really matter. But there's been money put aside for this project for years. I think it's important to note that, you know, for the public is, we haven't asked the public for a dime. I mean, we've raised this money.
And we're not going to.
Right. No intentions of doing that, but, you know, I have sticker shock, I think, like the rest of us, but, you know, but I understand that, you know, we have to get to a level, public safety, if, you know, if we don't have good public safety, our property values will go up. Property values have gone like this. We're number two in the whole state of the wealthiest cities in this, in the state of Delaware. So that's not by accident because we have a safe town. So, you know, I think to go along with that, you have to have something that people can work out of. We can't let, do you still have those pictures, Laura, that the Cape Gazette did for us?
Oh, let me carry them up, I'm sorry.
But, you know, when you take a look at that, it's like, I don't know if people have ever been inside the holding cell and what that looks like. And, you know, it's not long forgotten that we had somebody break through the wall into the Alderman's office and escape that was already arrested. You know, so we can't live like that anymore, right Cliff? So, you know, we've raised a lot of money and have done a lot of good lobbying to get that money. We can give it back to the state and say, we're not going to spend, you know, thanks but no thanks, but I think that would be dumb on our part. Part of the reason this cost has gone up is when you get state money, you have to use a prevailing wage to pay for it, which raised some costs that we weren't expecting. Yeah, there's, these are some very nice photos. So this is the environment that we're in now. How do you know if your, if your office is too small? Well, if you walk down the hall, there's a copier that you got to walk around because that's in the hallway. Files are sitting there. Here's the facts, you know, like how wide that hallway is, I mean, it's.
Can I just pause it for a second? Just so, when Lieutenant Dempsey and the chief were referring to taking a drunk prisoner upstairs, that's actually the cell, but if you go, that's the stairs they have to go up. It's outside in the back.
Yeah. Try to get a drunk person up those steps. That's magical. But, so if somebody's in that holding cell, we got to chain somebody to a bench. I mean, that's not really a pretty inhumane way to do stuff, but, so I think at minimum we have the three holding cells. I mean, that's, you know, we're not asking for 20 holding cells. We're going to have three, juvenile, male, and female. So that, you know, that brings us up to a code. And, you know, a lot of these expenses, this Warren report, you know, some of the quotes that I wrote down from there is, "Police station facility is woefully unacceptable." You need three holding cells. The building's 27 years old now and we go through mold remediation. I don't want employees to work. Meeting space, when we come over here, every now and then someone walks through that door and has to use a bathroom and, you know, this is fine to have it, but, you know, if we're going to build something, let's have meeting space in it. The Alderman needs more room. You know, the audiovisual stuff here, I know these people are watching on this camera here, but, you know, you've got to have a magnifying glass to see this for, so I think we need to bring that up the snuff. So we're still working on some more grants from the federal government for cameras and all those kinds of good things that go into the building. But these are all the things that we're addressing. I think the biggest mistake we made was calling it a town hall. It's really a public safety building.
Good. Okay. Open up to the public after I get a few of my words out. Obviously, we need a new town hall. That's very clear. A new facility in town to support all the various functions. When we started this process, I guess three years ago, almost three years ago, when we looked at it costing six to seven million, which was our estimates at that point in time, we didn't anticipate having the $5 million Commissioner Bauer alludes to. We did anticipate us having to get savings in funds as well as using, and our loan. The fact that we're able to get those $5 million doesn't mean we spend it. I'm just saying that it's a change. Gary, Commissioner Persinger, Commissioner Gibbons and I, we're here for the opening the bids. All three of us were relatively floored in terms of how the bids came in, with the lowest bid at $11 million, the highest bid over $13 million. We sit and go three years back and at seven, knowing that we had some supply chain issues and other issues, I was expecting nine as that number, was not expecting 11, 12, and 13. I think if the number came in at nine, we would be having less of these conversations around how or what needs to happen. But the fact of the matter is, is that we have been asked to be the stewards of this town and to take care of, not only providing the protection and the services, but make sure that we're not wrongfully spending in any, any way, shape, or form. When we go through this, after we open up for public, I do want to ask that we address the budget elements, we also address Commissioner Zdinsky's qualitative review of these vendors and try to look at a, and as well as understand the loan proceeds, but try to also look at a plan to potentially reduce and what the potential next steps are. If, if the community and the council decide that this is something that we need to punt, I will support that, but I will not be happy about it because I do believe we need a town hall. I did ask Dean this question, is that if we were to go back to the drawing board to change the footprint, change the square footage, whatever that might be, any change to the architectural drawings right now would most likely set us back another $2,000 to $3,000 in terms of new drawings, new permitting, as well as another year. And if we saw three, Dean, correct me what you told, it's 3.7 and 6% where the increase is year-over-year materials for two years?
Correct.
Another 5% if you just go in the middle of that, you know, is, is another half a million dollars if we wait another year to do this. So with that, I'll stop talking and I'll open it up to the public to come up for their public comment, unless Dave you wanted to make a comment, Ms. Naples, do you want to make anything now or?
I can, just add a little perspective.
Sure. Yes, don't mind, then the public. Please introduce yourself as well as your role in this.
Hello, everyone. Thanks for having me here tonight. My name's Dave Naples. I'm the owner-operator of Code Solutions LLC. I've been with Dewey Beach off and on for several years overseeing the agreement for the Ruttertown project. We enforce compliance with the, what was it called? The memorandum with the developer for that. So we've been around a little while. We've also had, personally, I've had experience with buildings like this. I oversaw all the inspections and the planning for the, excuse me, the Newcastle County Public Safety Building that was built around 2005, 2006. That building is similar, although it doesn't have the same town hall function, it does have a lot of admin space in there as well. A lot of holding cells, workout rooms, things of that nature, very state-of-the-art building. Best of my recollection, I think that building was around 25 to 30 million at the time, and it's 125,000 square feet, so about five times the size of this particular building. I was a little surprised by some of the bids that came in, but I think in perspective, the fact that they were fairly well grouped together is indicative that they are fair. I think there's always room for improvement. There's opportunities that were presented as far as cost savings, but I think that one of the biggest impacts that we saw during this design process was the implementation of the prevailing wage. I think on average, that was a million to a million five that was added, and Dean, correct me if I'm wrong, that was added to the cost of this project. So, again, given the longevity of the construction, we did have to reset when we had to redesign the building up an additional two feet for the freeboard. All those factors coming into play, I think if, if you don't do the building now, and I'm not, I'm an advocate that you do, if the building isn't done now and you go back and you redesign, you go for something smaller, you go for something a little less accommodating, you're going to be in the same situation a year or two from now, and the cost is going to be identical, but you're going to end up with a lesser product. That's just my experience from the construction standpoint. So I, I think everything, you know, that you need to make an informed decision is here. We can certainly help you, you know, understand some of the nuances of the project. To answer the question that was brought up about our involvement, we were asked to kind of oversee the day-to-day construction. We were asked to perform certain inspections as the construction progresses. We're going to be part of the fund disbursement when contractors ask for payment to make sure that the work that they're asking to be paid for has in fact been done or the material is delivered to the site. We're estimating at this point a maximum of 16 hours a week. Over the course of a year and a half, we're probably looking somewhere around $120,000 to $130,000 for our services. And that's not including any cost increases from our standpoint. Thank you.
And just for the record, what Ms. Naples was referring to, when you referred to the prevailing wage of $900,000 to $1.5 million, is that because we took in state funds, specifically the $3 million that we got through Representative Schwartzkopf, were required by Sussex County Law, by State of Delaware to use what they call prevailing wage, which is a higher wage than what market might be, and that is going to cost us an additional 900 to, you said 900 to 1.5 million? Ballpark. Big ballpark. Okay.
Lot of money.
With that, I'd like to open up to the public. Anybody like to come up and give some public comments? You can say your name and you have a few minutes, just, just so you know, we don't, we won't reply to public comment, we'll just, okay.
Yeah. My name's Eric Fiesel. Hi, everyone. So first of all, I just want to thank everyone for everything you guys have said, but I just want to say a few words. Let me start off by saying, you know, that Dewey Beach is really a seasonal beach town. So everything you guys have been talking about, as far as the need, typically happens during a season, not necessarily year-round. So I want to start off with that. And I know, you know, you may not like hearing that because we all want to see this town grow and grow into something bigger and better and nicer, and I get that. You know, we're seeing some businesses stay open longer year-round and that, and that's great, okay? But we're still a community of only a couple hundred full-time, year-round residents, and so I just don't think we need a town hall of this scale, okay? And that may come as a shock to a couple of you because it does sound like most of you are in favor of this. You know, many of the planned features and amenities are going to sit unused for the majority of the year. We're definitely going to use them in the summer season because that's when a lot of these things that you guys have been talking about actually occur. And I mean no disrespect to you guys because I respect all of you on the things you guys do, but just because a few of you guys want this, doesn't mean the community needs it, okay? The town has been raising prices on everything the last few years to afford. The town has been raising prices on everything the last few years to afford a growing list of expenses and other wants, and we need to learn to operate within our means. You know, I hear from those who come to visit our town on how expensive it is now compared to years past, and I think this town hall project is exactly the reason why we have to keep raising prices, is we keep trying to afford more. You know, I definitely understand a couple of your guys' perspective on why we think we need it when it's actually more of just a want, but I think we need to get back to being a fun, affordable beach town that's operating within its means. Those are all the comments I had, thanks.
Thank you. Name, where you're from?
Steve Montgomery. I am here to represent, I would just say, some comments from the business partnership. And I don't have, we, a group, I've talked to Alex, I've talked to Reagan, I've talked to Jimmy, all the, you know, what I call the players that are in business, whether it's seasonal, year-round in this town, and everybody is fully supportive of this town council, this town management, and this police chief, and all the things that have become so wonderful in this town the last several years. This, right now, is the best run I've ever seen Dewey, and I've been here since I was 13 years old selling hot dogs on Chicago Street and renting more umbrellas to kegs than to people, as we all remember the Dewey days. But everybody trusts you guys and the work you're all putting in to what we need in this town. Our new chief has been nothing but extraordinary. She's gotten a lot of toys that were well-needed and long, you know, neglected in this town, that our police force right now is something to brag about. As a board director in the Chamber of Commerce, Carol can tell you, we rave about Dewey Beach right now when we have our chamber meetings and how professionally this town is run, how it's grown, and the leadership. How big the town hall should be, I have no idea, no comment. I do know how terrible the current town hall is, though I have not been in the holding cell, so I don't know how to break out of it, I don't know how big it is, but apparently Paul knows more than I do.
I've seen it a few times.
He had comments on it.
Visitation, visitation.
I mean, my two cents is this, is that, you know, we support whatever you all think you need, we know that you'll sharpen pencils, and I saw the article two days ago, whatever, and I had no idea, I had that 78, I sat through one of these meetings and you guys are trying to get 8 million to 7 million, it was back, it was hours and hours and hours, and now it's jumped, but, you know, nobody knows what breaking a budget does more than me after building Starboard Claw. Yes, I could tell you, that thing was, you know, double what we anticipated putting into there, and, you know, when you talk about plans and going back to them, we, in building Starboard Claw, a year into the process, we got permission to tear the existing hammerheads building down and rebuild it. We should have, in hindsight, I wish we could have redesigned the building to that point, but again, like you all, we already had our plans done, we already spent $150,000, we had our permits, and we built the building as if it was adding on to hammerheads, and that's why it is the way it is today. It works, it's working. But, you know, we got money from Pete, we got money from Senator Coons, we got money from the county council for the Sussex EMTs. We all know how important all of these things on this wish list are for this town, and if you all have figured a way to make it work, we don't have a property tax, it's not going to cost anybody any more money, and it's expensive, we know that, but by anything in this town, I mean, I respect everything Eric said, you leave, about the costs of everything, but, you know, if we build a less expensive town hall, your $2 million lot is not going to be a $1.5 million lot, you know, it's the fact that the property values and the direction of this town are increasing, that Dewey's popularity is higher than it's ever been. Someone once told me the property values here were going to be higher than Rehoboth, and I believe they possibly are these days. I mean, it's crazy how many complaints I get on how expensive Dewey Beach is today because everybody wants to be here, meaning complaints because they want to buy homes here, and they can't afford to. So I just say that, you know, in talking to business owners, we're all in full support for what the direction you guys are in. If you need something, this town has always been built on donations and business support that we're all here to support, and I'm not paying for the town hall, but I'm here to support, I mean, as a group, we are always involved, as we always have been, to help support the growth and the future of this town, because it's going in a terrific direction these days.
Thank you. Anyone else here? Carol.
Carol Everhart, Dewey Beach, Rehoboth Beach, Chamber of Commerce.
Better. Like the sound of it.
I just want to say, I say this all the time, you are a destination. That destination affects your property values, whether it's a business or a house. Even if you're Disney, even if you're Disney, you have to have three things. You have to be safe, clean, and friendly. Doesn't matter even if you're Disney, so just keep that in mind when you make this decision. That's it.
Thanks, Carol. Anyone else? Laura, do we have anybody online?
Nobody, it's your casting.
Okay.
Dawn's got her hand up.
No, Dawn's.
Dawn Hinks.
Hi, Dawn.
She's muted.
Dawn, I think you're muted.
Dawn Hinks, hear me now?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good. Dawn Hinks, building official for the town of Dewey Beach. Yes, this town hall, this structure is expensive, but I just heard a statistic just the other day that a family of four going to McDonald's, many times they have to spend $60 or up to $60 to feed their family at McDonald's. Now, this particular town hall is going to house fire, rescue, fire and rescue, ambulance, police, building staff whenever there is a potential of a major weather event. This particular structure is being built to a risk category four, because this is going to be an emergency command center, not only during the year-round season, even though the summer season is much more used with the police department, yet it is a year-round facility. And so, yes, this particular command center is being built to this category to withstand flooding events that can happen in any year, a 1% chance every year, a 1% chance of winds over 100 miles an hour every year. So this is an essential facility, and our facility now cannot withstand any of that at this point in time. Are we willing to risk the lives of these people that are in this building now, even though something money-wise, it is expensive? Perhaps there just does need to be a redistribution of the needs for the safety. This building is not being created for a cosmetic purpose. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Dedeas.
Thank you. Jim Dedeas, I'm the assistant town manager, and I'm also a former property owner as of last year. I've been employed by the town since 2012 in various capacities as assistant town manager, as actually acting town manager, and working with a transition from one of our town managers to assist them in becoming a town manager. As a matter of fact, he left three months after I assisted him, but that's a separate story. I'd like to point out that recently, most recently, just to give you an example, we've seen several homes built here, oceanfront homes, that originally property was bought for $3 million. The home estimated cost, it came in at $4.5 million, and then we asked for a final cost analysis at the completion of the home, and then the owner came back, oh, you another $1.5 million. That's two homes that came in that way. And we see in building permits what cost of construction has just gone up, it's skyrocketed. So we're bringing in a lot of families that have come in, we're bringing people that have retired and that have come in, and we're bringing in people that are elderly. And I come to that because, as you know, all of us know, this building is so far away from being ADA. We have to occasionally meet people downstairs, at least from building perspective, and we meet people out in the hallway, and the building, the bids that came in, we didn't have room to bring anybody in, so we had to do that outdoors. And we're finding that more and more, we're just overcrowded, there is really no place to have a meeting and a discussion without coming into a small conference room upstairs. And then we have to ask some of our employees to leave the building, and either some go home and some go out, and our code enforcement officer asks, he's fine because he can go out in a mobile code enforcement vehicle. Mold has been an issue. I remember years ago, we were, we had a spot visit from OSHA, which floored me. They just couldn't believe the working environment that people are in the town hall. We're grandfathered in, obviously, and we've had to make numerous, I guess, maintenance work done, the mold repairs that were done by the most current town manager. We did that multiple times in the past. The building is obviously deteriorated, we've outlived our life this, and it's really sad that we haven't done this earlier. This town hall has outlived its purpose. We're not a mom-and-pop country store anymore, and that's what people think when they come into town hall. This is not a good image for this town. It's done so great. We're bringing in very, very nice families, more and more, and it seems to me that at this point, this is not something that we want, it's something that we need here. And having been here long enough, I can tell you, I think this is probably the best thing that the county, I mean, the town can do. And I have to give credit, years ago, when one of our former town managers had the foresight to purchase two lots, they gave us this opportunity to build this. So I think we're on the mend, and I think this is something that we won't regret, and it's going to be for the future for 30, 40 years from now.
Thanks, Jim. All right.
Oh, yes.
And this is on town hall? Please make sure he knows that.
He's asking to comment now.
Got it.
Yeah, David Moskowitz, Dewey Beach. This whole discussion has become sidetracked and almost like a waste of an hour. The town needs a new town hall, that's not the question, and there's some grants available. The real challenge is ensuring the project fits within the budget, which requires making tough decisions, such as what, removing certain options, determining whether the town can afford any extras or change orders during constructions, possibly some small redesigns to save money, and selecting the right contractor. And the employees, of course, have a bias in supporting the project, but the focus needs to be on the cost-coding measures to make it financially feasible, not on whether the town needs a new town hall, that's obvious.
Thank you. All right. Laura, anybody else?
No.
All right, let's move out of public comment and council. We talked about, I think we've established, if you guys, if you can push through a few things, that we obviously need a new town hall and that we've already evaluated the needs versus wants. Commissioner Persinger and Commissioner Zdinski brought up two things. One is, we will need to get our hands around the CSI, which I believe Ms. Naples said was approximately between 120, 130, what will be the additional GMB fees, what will be the demolition fees, and what is going to possibly be allocated also for the furniture fixtures and equipment.
Right, so for the demo, the demo of the current town hall is included in the bids. The demo of the parking building, I went out and we got, Jim and I got, three bids, the lowest was $15,000. We're saving about 25% by doing that ourselves instead of having it go out and bid, according to GMB. So that's there, the money would come out of, to answer Commissioner Persinger's question, the money would come out of the town hall fund to pay for that. We've tried to, where we could, do things like the demo to try to save money. The reason we did do the demo on the second town hall, we felt that would be very difficult for an outside contractor to come in and demo the town hall we're currently in, why another contractor would be building, you know, finishing up the first town hall. So if the same contractor was doing all the work, they would also demo the second town hall, so it would be, they would roll right into it, we wouldn't have to stop, bring in another demo person, but we decided the first one we could do without, and we would save some money, so that's why, that's why we did that.
Got it.
Yeah, the only, my point is, even if it's only $15,000, it adds to the cost of the project.
It does.
As does the cost of Mr. Naples' work as well. I mean, his work is essential, someone has to have the expertise to monitor the contractor and monitor the work and make sure it's being done correctly and we're not paying for something that we're not getting, so it's essential, but again, it's got to be added to the cost of the project.
Sure.
We have to have that fully, we have to be fully aware of that.
All right, with that, we, instead, before we get into the details in terms of, can we also hear from the, I think, to get the qualitative view of the contractors off the table based upon, you know, based upon the bids that we received, so that we can talk specifics, as if, because I think one of the things that David had asked for is not just a quantitative, who's the low bidder, but who do you suggest that we use and why from a qualitative standpoint?
Right, so we asked Dave Naples' team and for GMB's team to review the bids, the seven that were given to us, and not just look at which contractor was the lowest bid, we wanted to look at past history, the references, have they built projects like this before, and also consider, consider the cost. So those two analyses were done, they were on the town webpage, we did add them this morning as a supporting document, as Commissioner Zdinski asked us to do it, it was the right thing to do. They are there, and if you would like to ask either Dave Naples or Dean to go into those, my opinion based on my recommendation would be to go with Costello. They appear based on the recommendations, they have the experience in projects like this, they came in at the lowest bid, the references were also good. Now, I know, keep in mind, people put references down, they're not going to put a reference down if somebody's going to give them a bad one. Keep that in mind, but GMB did actually go out and look at where they have built other facilities, Loudoun County Courthouse, which does have holding cells in it, which is a big part of the cost in this, we have to make sure we get that right. I'm sure Dean or Mr. Naples can provide more of an expert opinion on how we did the recommendation.
If they have additional data that would help us make that decision.
So I guess more specifically, when I looked at the other companies, the one that I looked at a little closer was Keller in terms of the stuff that they had done previously, you know, police, liability municipal experience. I wanted your guys' thoughts on how that factored into your decision, their experience level.
Yeah, come on up.
So it's interesting that you focused on Keller. I broke it down, I didn't go to the lengths that Dean did with interviewing past references for these contractors, so I broke it down into several different formats. Obviously, price is kind of the attention-getter on everything, and I ranked them slightly differently. Costello did come out number one for me for various reasons. The only time Keller actually appeared on my list as a possible candidate was if we get into the permutations of accepting alternatives or rejecting alternatives, whether we accept new one's being constructed, get that occupied, move into that building so that we can demo the old town hall. That's what the phasing of this project refers to. Keller, as an example, came in about 1.3 to 1.4 million higher than Costello, if we look at them as building the project both phase one and phase two at the onset. I think the only time they came up a little higher is if we accepted, or if the town accepted every single alternate. In other words, taking all alternates, one through nine, off of the table. You save that money. That saves the town roughly $500,000 if you just blanketly take all alternates off the table. I looked at some of the past projects that I could find for these particular contractors. I do not have any personal experience with any of the finalists that I came up with. Costello does, all of them actually have experience doing all types of projects, this one included. I don't think any of the four that I ranked would be deficient in any aspect in actually building the building. I think they have the skill set and the resources to do that. So in my view, some other mitigating factors, if you look at Keller, as that was brought up, you're looking at, I think, 12.3 million and 670 total days of construction. Costello was at about 11 million to start and 600 total days of construction. So we could be talking, you know, an additional half a year or so under construction, depending on who we go with. So I did look at some of their projects. Costello did a five-story library building in Silver Spring, that was a 35 to 40 million dollar project and 90,000 square feet. They did a combination retail parking structure. And it's, I think it was called Little Patuxent Square, 12-story above grade structure, 150,000 square feet, 70, 80 million dollar budget. And a Silver Spring Civic Building, very similar to this building, that was about 45,000 square feet and a $20 million cost to construct. Everything that I've looked at, numbers-wise, skill set-wise, and time of construction, I zeroed in on Costello Construction as well.
So your position is that Costello, you keep talking about price a lot, I'm just talking about in terms of execution, building, that Costello is the number one vendor in terms of execution build regardless of price?
I think they all have the same skill set to get the job done. Costello looked like it could get it done quicker than anyone else.
Why do you think they can do it quicker?
Because the bid that they gave us was 600 total days of construction.
Well, I'm not asking that. I'm asking, like, what about them makes them able to do it faster?
I know they have some in-house components as well. I think they have their own concrete division. So all that's in-house. I didn't get into the details of everything that they brought to the table. That is in the bid packages where they listed all their trades. A lot of those are in-house trades. So I think that does create some efficiencies for them.
Less coordination of subcontractors?
Yes.
And pardon to interrupt, if I don't mind interjecting on that one, to expand upon that. So when we did follow up, we did follow up with three lowest bidders across the board, Costello being priority, just because they were the flat-out lowest bidder. When we did talk to them, we did ask about the calendar days for all the three shortlist contractors. We asked if they felt that was adequate for what they needed. They proceeded to elaborate and even offered a cost savings measure for the town, that if you were to go ahead and eliminate the phasing, do it all at once, they could deliver a project as close as 14 to 16 months. So it could actually be done a lot less than the time that they provided. Granted, a lot of them went high, just out of uncertainty for working around the seasonal schedule, especially since there are requirements where you can't construct between May and September. But by and large, Costello, they were able to, you know, consider that if they were to do it all at once, they could actually shortline and mainstream the process in addition to of the subcontractors that all the contractors listed. I think Harkins was the only second one where they had two of the trades they would do themselves. Costello came at the highest of doing six of the 17 trades listed. So a lot of it's going to be done by their crew to help speed and expedite the project.
David, any other questions? Commissioner Gibbings?
I interjected as necessary, thank you.
Okay. I do want to, you know, let's, so as we further this conversation, I was hoping to get some agreement with council on kind of a baseline, and that is, if you agree, if you don't agree, let's have that conversation, that given the importance of this decision, and given what we've talked about, and about this being the police department, administrative, town hall, meeting center.
Alderman.
Alderman and EMS, which is phase one and phase two. When I first sat here and went through the first, the callouts of the dollar figures, my first figure, thought process was to get rid of phase two. Like, how do we get down? After having conversations with the chief and having conversations, I actually reached out to the head of the Sussex County EMS this morning to get their take on the EMS here. And he reiterated that in the worst-case scenario, it takes at least five minutes off response time between Rehoboth and Bethany by having an EMS here in town, which means also for town residents, it's even quicker than that. If something happens to our residents, they can be there in a minute or two, assuming that they're not somewhere else up and down. I know that our town manager has reached out to the county also to state that we may need to ask for additional funds to support the EMS. So I'm hoping that we can move forward, just assuming it's the whole buy, it's not just a. So if anyone has a disagreement on that, I ask from councils to state your opinion.
So it was interesting to, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
It was interesting to me that Costello thought that they could do it faster if they didn't do it phased. My understanding was that we needed to do it phased because we were still using our current building and we could be without building at all if we did that. Is it possible to just do the whole thing? Anybody, yes?
Well, they're looking, it is. Is that what you're saying?
It is. I think the town will have to consider alternative office accommodations and police accommodations, because effectively you're going to take the existing town hall building offline, right? At the onset.
At the onset, oh.
Yeah, at the onset. They'd have to be housed somewhere else.
So if we save $400,000, we have to rent space, we have to move people, I mean, the cost savings are going to shrink because of all the additional expenses to do Plan B, well, it's under construction, that's.
That wouldn't really work for the police department. I mean, we have to have a holding cell, we have to handle prisons.
We just have a little one in the parking lot.
Our dispatchers and it just, that would not work.
Okay, I needed that clarification, that's what I was thinking, but now.
But I want to make sure I did understand one thing in the multiple conversations that I've had, that if we sign, if it's Costello and we agree to move forward by signing phase one and two, even though they're done in two separate contracts, there's an additional cost savings of 400,000 with that. So what is 11 million becomes 10.6.
That's correct, right, Dean?
Correct.
Wait a minute, maybe I'm not understanding it. I thought, I thought when you guys sent your summary, I wanted to show you that we all were.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, because there's a lot of things being thrown around, I just want to make sure.
When you talked about the 10.677 as your summary price, that is for a phased project, but accepting some of the alternatives. Is that correct?
No. That's just the signings, we're assigned for phase two now and phase one now, which de-risks, not to throw this out, it de-risks any future costs. Like, if we signed up for phase one now, we, it's the 9.6.
So Costello had a higher phase two than anybody else?
No, lowest actually.
Phase two.
Lowest.
It was 1.6, it was lowest.
I thought there was some, never mind, I'll shut up.
So, okay, so Costello's price for phase one was 9.4, and then 1.6 for phase two. So that basically brings you a little over 11. And then you've got a total cost of 10.6, so I assume that's accepting some of the alternatives.
So the 10.6 would be, correct me if I'm wrong, Dean, would be if we went with Costello to do phase one, why we stayed in the town hall, and then went and had them also do phase two, they would bring their price down 400, approximately $413,000. Is that correct, Dean?
Correct. That's doing phase one and two all at the same time. You will have to demolish the existing town hall for that piece because they'll be doing phase one and two continuously.
It's different. The eliminating phasing means everyone moves out of town hall and they build it all at once for 400,000 savings. What you're saying, Dean? So that $400,000, police chief, basically, wisely, kind of said, not going to work for us. So that $400,000, we can't really capture realistically in terms of the way we operate as a town. Right? Dean used that as a key point.
That's not the way I understood it.
That's not the way I understand it.
That's not the way I understood it.
Well, that's what Dean just said.
It is. Dean, explain this to us.
Yes, so at the very end of the bidding process, the question came up by several contractors, so we asked it. We asked to indicate the savings if they were to go ahead and build both phase one and phase two all at the same time. What that means is, as we originally had designed in phase, phase one would only occur to two coastal highway properties, leaving your town hall in existence. Once that phase one was done, town hall would be demolished, then they proceeded phase two, which is the EMS and Sally Ports. This alternate that was put forth was to go ahead and eliminate the town hall all at the same time in construction. That way, everything for phase one and phase two was all done in one continuous phase. So.
That's not viable.
So that's not viable. So let me go back and try to summarize. If it's Costello, it's 9.4 plus 1.6, so it's a little over 11 million total.
Right.
We can get that numbered down if we take out, if we accept some of the alternatives, which we still have to go through the alternatives.
Sure.
And decide which ones we would want to accept.
Right.
So that would be, basically, the total price will still be 10-something, most likely. We just don't know until we go through the alternatives and decide. And that would be for a phased project that does not include necessarily fixtures, includes furnishings, doesn't necessarily include all fixtures, doesn't include any costs. You talked about the GMB money, you talked about the CSI money, so there are other costs on top of that. But in terms of this contract, the price is going to end up for a phased project with Costello between 10 and 11, okay? So anyway, I have an idea, because you said you want us to kind of pre-commit on doing both phases. And so my idea, okay, is that, we talk about this and we'll motion it later, my idea on this is that, assuming we all agree and decide what alternatives we want and we vote on this, that we approve recommended vendors, Costello will go through the things for both phases. But we stipulate that there's a term in the contract that they allow the town to opt out of phase two at any point prior to March 31, 2026. What that's going to give us the time to do, is going to give us the time to figure out all these other numbers that are kind of a little bit squirrely. Candidate's going to figure out for us, for some of the fixtures, some of the police things that are going to be needed, whether we're going to get grant money, we're going to pay for them ourselves, okay? Be able to get moving on the project, project will be contracted, but we collectively, us, then, you know, have, there's some additional stuff that we're going to need to get figured out to be able to do both phases of the project financially, from my perspective, okay? So that's my idea about if we're going to move forward, that we stipulate that that be in the contract.
My only arg, well, my only thought on that, and it's, and I just want to make sure, because I think Gary and I had a different thought process, and that was, if we signed up for phase one and two now, 11 becomes 10.6. It still meant that we're staying in town hall, as it is right now, until the phase one was complete, that week or two weeks, whatever it takes, we move over, and then they start on. But I thought that we would save 400,000 just by signing both.
Right.
Not saying that we're out of town hall, so they can build it.
So Dean, when we talked about this, it was pretty clear that if we signed to do one and two, we would save 413, but you're saying that it has to be all done at one time?
Right, that was a condition of that one. Otherwise, the base bid, you already have the price for doing phases one and phases two as phase construction. So that's already the base bid piece. You already have that covered. That's the base bid that they submitted. The alternate was to eliminate that phasing and just construct it all at once.
Dean, it doesn't matter, that's never going to happen.
Can't functionally do it.
We can't function without a town hall, police station for a year.
Right.
So.
I just, I can't for the life of me understand why that was even in there. Why would we ask anybody to bid on that? It's a physical impossibility.
Right. Yeah, Dean, what was the thought on that?
Just to see if there was a cost savings for you guys. It was asked by the contractors, so we had, but yes, I understand, sorry.
All right.
I have a question.
Good.
Yeah, Dean, when we go through this, I mean, obviously, we all have sticker shock on it. What, what can we do to get this cost down?
You know, actually, we were just talking about this too. I would say probably very strong consideration, if any of the contractors you feel like you're willing to commit into contract with, it might be worthwhile to have a conversation just to ask, see if there's any additional value engineering efforts they can implement before you fully execute the contract.
Is this everybody's best and final?
Is that what you're saying? To give everybody the option, because I would seem to think that.
Give everybody an option for a best and final?
I don't think we can do that.
No. I think we'd have a protest.
Yeah, it would be issues for them, because the bids are sealed.
Could we kill the bid and rebid it?
No.
That's what I'm saying, in my experience to.
I apologize. Go ahead, Gary.
Yeah, from my perspective, I'm not sure I would feel comfortable with David's suggestion. I have to think about that a bit more, but just, if we take Costello Construction, for example, 11.08 million dollars. If we took all of the alternatives, that would save 500,000, so we're down to about 10.5. From my perspective, based on the, my understanding of the resources that we have available, unless there's a magic pot of money out there, we're short $300,000. We've got about 10.2 million dollars in resources. We've got five from the state, we've got 2.2, potentially in resources. We've got 2.2 in the town improvement fund, town hall improvement fund, although there's still a continuing draw on that, and we have to recognize that. And then if we took the maximum of $3 million alone, it comes out at about 10.2, and we're $300,000 short. I am not aware of an additional $300,000 that we have access to. Now, there have been some proposals potentially to take it from some other sources of money, the Rainy Day Fund in particular. It simply does not, the way that fund is constructed, using those funds, any of those funds for this purpose is, completely violates our, the policy that we adopted. So I think we're, I think we're short, and we would have to look for some additional money. And that's assuming we took all of the options, which, as I read through the options, I don't think is an unreasonable approach. I mean, you don't have to have ceramic tile, you know, polished, painted concrete walls are just fine. You can have a concrete floor, that's just fine as well. If you eliminate windows up on the third floor, part of that provision is that they be roughed in, so that there is a potential to add windows later, if in fact you want to do that. If you take out the second elevator, there is, as I read this, there would be some sort of a handicap lift that would be a part of that proposal. That seems to me to be perfectly feasible. I think we should be in the mindset of looking for cost reductions and not trying to scramble for money, extra sources of money. We need to try to get this town, if at all possible, to something that we feel like we can manage. Because, you know, even with what I just went through, we're committing the town to 20 years of debt. We didn't do that with the Bayard Pumping Station, as I recall.
It was 10 years.
It was 10 years. So, and in fact, we did, we were fortunate, we were able to pay that off a bid early, as I recall.
Seven, right.
So I assume we need to take all this, I'm just, don't feel real comfortable. That's why I say for me, the financing on this is really still very murky for me.
Can we, can we go through the odds and try to get some consensus around it, so we understand where our, what our number is? Do we have a better idea?
The alternatives? Are we talking about the alternatives?
Yeah.
Before we go there, I don't want to, I just want to throw out a different argument. If we're committed to phase one, because that now is clear, because when I thought that the 400,000 was just signing up to have both phases done by the same organization, right? The reality is that Harkins is at 400,000 less than Costello on the phase one. And I was very surprised when we went through this bidding process, that Sally Port, which is 3,600 square feet, but it's a three-car garage with a loft, with, you know, with the barracks on top, came as high as $3 million on some of those additional funds. That's not to say that we'll be able to save money in the future, but I'm still surprised that you've got 9 and 3, one of the two very different structures that are being built, the facility and the garage.
Well, I mean, the thing that really sticks out is the fact that.
with, with a barracks on top, came as high as $3 million on some of those additional funds. That's not to say that we'll be able to save money in the future, but I'm still surprised that you've got nine and three, one of the two very different structures that are being built, facility and the garage.
Well, I mean, the thing that really sticks out is the fact that Costello is just all by themselves, you know, at 1.6, you know.
Right, but I could, I would sit here and argue, why not start with Harkins at nine, nine two, to see what other adjustments they may have? Because we, we focus all of this based on Costello.
So my thought process is, I am going through today, trying to get to yes, right? That's, that's my overall approach, and when I suggest, made my suggestion, my suggestion is really that we intend to do both phases, but that we're giving ourselves 14 months to make sure that A, we don't run into problems, we could run into problems with contractor, for instance, as well, but also that we, we get some of the, get some of the things that are unknown right now figured out. The difference between first phase, between Harkins and Costello, is 9.2 versus 9.48, so it's 100 and, two, three, 260,000 dollars. And then the phase two is a ginormous difference, and there's no way Costello is going to do phase two only, you know, they're not going to offer to do that, so, and rebid or best and final is not really an option, right? So from my perspective, if we think we're ultimately going to take both phases, even if we give ourselves an opt-out, Costello makes, makes more sense.
Anyone else?
Did you want to talk about the alternatives?
No, I'm, I'm not, I just want to throw it out there, if everyone's in agreement that we should have this conversation with Costello moving forward, I'm fine with that, I just want to make sure everyone's, is it?
I, I'm not feeling comfortable with having a conversation with anybody at the moment.
Well, well.
Just because of the money.
To talk about the alt, we have to, we have to know which vendor is more likely to be the primary, because the prices and the alts are different, it's going to influence our decision for which alts we would, alternative we'd want to accept, because how they discounted it was very different.
Huge.
Yeah.
Fred, is there an avenue to reach out to those that have submitted qualified bids? We know, we know who they are, the seven, and ask them for any additional cost saving that they could provide, based upon what's different than the specs that we've offered, or we can't do that as part of the bidding process? Or we would have to choose a vendor and then have those conversations? I'm more, I'm much more comfortable with this latter approach, the, the difficulty that the former suggestion raises is, is now everybody's put their cards on the table, and I think.
Somebody could undercut, just saying.
Yeah, everybody, and so, all right, so I think that, that exposes us to, to an argument that, exposes us to liability, I mean, there may be other more blanket or apparent reasons why that's not appropriate, that I'm not familiar with, or I could come up with if I looked at it longer, but just from a logical point of view.
It's going to create, whether it's real or not, it's going to create an issue, I get it.
Okay, thank you. All right.
I took the liberty of attaching it all up here, so you could see the cost savings by each vendor, and then you can narrow it up costs.
Yeah, is that, is that from the GMB analysis? Because I'm looking at a similar table, yeah, I, I've got that.
It's easier to look at all the way across.
All right. Are we, are we in a position to move forward with Costello or not with Costello? Because I don't know that it makes, I don't think we, we can't ask Costello for further possible elements to reduce the overall cost, unless we choose Costello, if I heard you correctly.
Correct.
So if we motion, and we end up with a nine four, because we decided only do phase one, minus whatever improvements they have, they come up with, and it's nine or eight eight, whatever it might be at that point in time, at least we can then have some constructive conversation around how they, as a specific contractor, would move forward. So the question I'm asking is, can we move forward by picking? Or from Gary, and I want to respect your point of view, if you don't feel comfortable picking anything because of the numbers, I understand.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's still where I am at this point.
Can I ask the question you're suggesting a little differently, and that's that, for purposes of our discussion, can we make an assumption about which vendor would be the one, so that we can discuss the alternatives and some specifics around it, and that's not selecting them, that's just assuming.
That's fine.
Yeah, I like that, I agree.
For purposes of the discussion.
Okay. All right. So right now, we're at 11 million 80, as our starting number.
11 million and 80,000?
Yep.
That's the Costello number.
That's the Costello number. And we're assuming that we're doing both, and in the end, doing both phases, as you say that, all right, so that includes EMS, just get built to get another 600,000 out of the county. Talk about the first element, the flooring. I've, I've had a conversation with their town manager, I think that's an easy fix, easy cross-off, that we don't need to worry about it, correct, sir?
Correct. That's 105 savings if you went with Costello.
Correct.
How much is 105?
105.
105.
The metal versus the PVC, I asked Dean this, it's not a functional change, and it's a, there's, there's no real reason not to subtract 105.
Lot of money for a flooring.
So that's alternate four?
They changed metal roof to the PVC roof, so. So the flooring is 105.
Correct.
Okay, so wait a minute, wait a minute, so you're skipping.
So alternate one.
You're skipping from one to four?
I don't have that, I have a different sheet. So if you want to read, David, take control, if you want to read it through those, those phases, go through one.
Alt number two, alt one is 105, we're pretty much all congruent with that.
That's a terrazzo.
Right. Alt number two is omit fur drywall, I read it, I didn't understand it.
I don't know what fur drywall is.
What's that?
I don't know what that is.
So, yeah, someone needs to explain.
Dean, would you explain that?
It was concrete.
Yes, so in the case, what you have on the first floor, you have concrete walls, which are your ballistic and safety rating procedures for the building, it's all fur out, so there's a metal stud that's attached to that concrete wall, and then it's faced with drywall, that way you do not have the impression that it's just the raw concrete that's in the room, but it's provided one, so you can actually run your outlets, your power, any of your wiring through the walls, but without having to see that, or incurring the added cost of embedding that into the concrete wall. So in the case of this, it would be the cost to remove that furring, it's just going to be the exposed concrete, that's all you're going to get.
So are you basically saying the option, or alternative two, would result in the interior of the building having concrete walls?
With no access. On the first floor.
You'll still have the power in the outlets, but you just won't have the drywall, so you're going to. Right.
Yeah, I'm not.
I think we need drywall.
I think we need drywall, so.
Yes, I disagree.
No, but what was described is what.
We need to cut costs, we need to, I don't care how, we need to cut costs.
So I have been in the FTC in Philadelphia, Federal Detention Center Philadelphia, as a visitor, not detained, and the lobby has one feel, and once you go inside, it is, it is stripped down horrible, and I would not want that for our town public safety building.
In order, in order for us to get through all 12 things, what I suggest?
Does he need, you need to get up at the mic.
Yeah, you should go, yeah.
Be recognized by the mayor.
I, I did have a detention center in my past employment that I was responsible for, built in concrete, it was done very nicely, during the time that I was there, we had to run additional electrical, and we had to run all kinds of tubing on the concrete wall to make, there was no way to make adjustments to it, so it sounds great, but if you have to do things, it's not a pretty picture after the fact.
So just to get through these 12 things, what I think we should do, just for assumption purposes, no one's really voting, the ones, the ones we choose to eliminate will be if three or more of us are in agreement that they should be eliminated, and that will be the presumption of assumption going forward, is that a fair way to proceed?
Fair. You know, I prefer four, but.
As you're going through this, since not everybody has a table that you and I, maybe you can see how much money we reach.
So $40,000 for concrete walls is the savings, I'm not in favor of that.
Me neither. I am in favor of that.
I am not in favor.
I am not.
Okay, so we'll assume that one as well. The next one is omit LBT carpet, I think it's being replaced with something, I'm trying to remember. And substitute polished concrete. So Dean, is this basically?
Save 10,000.
Oh, sorry, $10,000 savings, and basically, what that means is office spaces, instead of having LBT, LBT is luxury vinyl tile, if anyone doesn't know, but it's come a long way, it actually looks pretty good, and it does really walk nice, it doesn't feel like your old laminate floors have days passed, so I wouldn't think people need to worry about that too much, but the areas that would have been carpeted office areas and whatnot are now concrete floors.
Correct.
You're an architect, when you look at interior office space, my question to you is, in terms of how it looks and feels, I always kind of think that this is a very industrial look to have polished concrete floors, and I'm just wondering, for $10,000, do we want to turn the appearance of the inside of our town hall into a very industrial type of appearance?
I agree, it's, I'm just going to have to add points for it's very utilitarian.
Okay, so I'm not in favor of that.
And from a Fireco perspective, if anybody can speak to this, if somebody were to decide in their small space, they wish to bring in their own carpeting at their own cost, would that be a violation then?
No, no, it'd be good to do that at any point in time.
And the town could add carpeting at a later date.
Yeah. That is a point, could, but.
It wouldn't happen, what's, what's, you're in, you're in.
Okay, so, is, is anyone in favor of eliminating the LBT and carpet?
Yep.
You are? Anyone, anyone else?
I'm not, I want to find hundreds of thousands, not a few thousand.
Every dollar counts.
The next one is PVC, PVC roof in lieu of standing seam metal roof, to save 110,000, that's significant, Dean, I know what a standing seam roof looks like, I like them, I have no idea what this PVC substitution looks like, can you help us?
So it's going to be sheet PVC that gets laid on the roof, we did include PVC ribs, so that way from the street level, you get the feeling that it's still standing seam, though it's all PVC membrane.
And it would be designed to hold solar panels if we decide to do that in the future, that was one of the things we asked Dean about.
Right, so initially, for that purpose, that's why we wanted the standing metal seam, the PVC can support solar panels, it's just we had to make sure that the manufacturer installing it is aware of that, so that's all.
I mean, this is, this is a substantial amount of money, so.
That's a good savings, yeah, me too.
But I, but I'm just scared about the visuals, you know, of what it looks like, like it took, it took me a long time to get comfortable with luxury vinyl tiles, it got better, is this PVC roof going to look like a nice standing seam roof, that's what I really want to know.
Yes, it's actually chunky too, the gift ribs are about like two inches thick, so it has a huge visual appearance from the ground level. It's heat welded, yes, it's heat welded, so you don't see the seams, and by and large, for the most applications we've seen so far, it's held up fairly well, more so even durability wise, a lot better than some of the standing metals that are out there.
And same color options in terms of what we are doing?
Usually, the color options are very limited, but very similar to what was already designed to it, so they have a metallic silver color, but otherwise they have a pretty much white, tan, the spray silver or black, so it's going to be close to what you have already.
I'm okay with that.
I have just a quick question, so will this change the risk level for it all for the building?
Nope, will have no impact on it.
Right.
I'm in favor.
I'm in favor.
Yeah, me too. I'm in favor, just one note, there are two contractors who did, who believe this increases cost rather than decreases cost. Parkin's being one of them.
It's a good point. Omit third floor windows, so I know you're blocking minutes, $18,000, thanks for correcting me, I'd spent a lot of time getting this big enough to be able to reprint it out, saves $18,000, but again, you're the architect, and this is the facade of our building, and it was built so that it would look right with windows on this third floor dormer that sticks out, and so I look at, like, kind of having something that's kind of being engineered, and now it's kind of turning into a blank spot, where our designer thought that windows needed to be there to make it look right, and I don't know if you have any more comments on that.
It's not going to be great, going to have a billboard, for sure.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Oh, sorry, it's not going to look that pleasant, it's going to end up looking like a billboard, plus the other part that's not being considered here, though you might be getting $18,000 saving later down the road, when you guys go ahead to stick it back in, it's definitely going to be a lot more than $18,000, so just something you can consider.
I have a question on the windows, I know of some of the dormers, and I have two, several dormers that have non-movable windows, is that an alternative? See-through, you can actually see through it, you get some sunshine in there, but we would have a window there rather than a fake whatever, because why a dormer up there if we're not going to put windows in?
It's a possibility, I think all of that, it was indicated in the alternate, they were just going to remove the windows and just fill it with siding, yes, they'll have the blocking, that way if they ever go to reframe a window there, they can, but in terms of the evaluation of a false window, it wasn't assessed with that alternate, how about that? Worthwhile consideration to ask the contractors if they can make that part of it.
I'm, I'm not in favor of that, of doing this, for $18,000.
Plus, we're going to someday, we're going to store things up there, and then someday in the future, 30-year building, there may be something else up there.
So to save money now and have to spend more later, it's not a good idea to me.
I'm in favor of not putting the window in, just because, again, I think Gary made a very good point, we're trying to figure out how to wind this down. We're going to put 20 more people up there in 10, 20 years, I think we can spend the extra $30,000 if we want to put windows in, we don't have the money right now, that's my point.
We got two and two.
Man, I'm all for saving.
That's why you're on camera, you say yes or no.
I'm all for saving money, but, you know, we're going to spend 18,000, you know, that's a drop in a bucket, so let's do the windows.
So we will keep the windows in, the thing that turned me is, the designer of the building said, this isn't going to look great.
Right.
So it concerns me, okay, omit ceramic tile for $9,000, I just want to know where the ceramic tile was, is this like in bathrooms, or is this, where is this?
In the shower area in the locker room.
Correct.
It's a very small locker room with a very small shower, and that's the $9,000, it could be taken out.
Yeah, I, I would support that.
Yep.
The shower is still going to be totally functional?
Yeah, it'll just be vinyl instead of tile, I think.
Gary?
Uh, yeah, I'm in favor of it.
Easier to keep clean.
Okay, I, alternative number seven is called HM door in lieu of FBG door to save $19,000, I have no idea what you're talking about.
So the exterior doors, aside from storefronts, they're all fiberglass doors, they're solid doors essentially, the reason why they're fiberglass clad, they're just more resistant to the coastal environment, the substitution is for hollow metal door in its place, which also works in the coastal environment as well, but it's just a heavy metal door versus the fiberglass door.
Okay, so which doors are we talking about specifically?
So the exterior doors to the exit, the one that's by the EMS door stairway to get in, you do have the mechanical one that is leading into the mechanical space, that is also fiberglass doors, so it's really only those doors, otherwise.
It's not the public door, it's not the public.
It's not the public door.
And it still meets Fireco?
Correct.
We cut it.
Yeah, we can cut that one.
To be, be clear, we're talking about putting in fiberglass doors and frames instead of hollow metal doors and frames.
It's the opposite.
Well, that's what it says.
It says hollow metal door.
It says substitute fiberglass doors and frames for hollow metal doors and frames, that's alternative number seven, that's what it really.
Oh, because my table.
Hollow metal door in lieu of fiberglass.
Not what I'm reading, this is from the bid package, I'm reading alternative seven, it's how it was stated.
One way it's typed wrong, and one way it's typed right, and we don't know which is which, so on the table summary, it says it's going in one direction, and on the printed text, it says it's going in another, which is?
Fiberglass, the hollow metal.
Which one's cheaper, fiberglass?
No.
What I want to know is what language, what language went through the bidders?
Well, that was in the bid document, but that should say.
I think I'm looking at the bid document, alternative number seven, substitute fiberglass doors and frames for hollow metal doors and frames.
It's a door.
I'm fine with either door, as long as we save the money.
Whichever one is cheaper.
Let's go.
That's fine, that.
Okay, so, so Dean, when, whenever this gets executed, obviously someone's going So, so Dean, when, whenever this gets executed, obviously someone's gonna have to clarify what that is, but I think, I think none of us care, we just want to save the money, because it doesn't make sense to us. And so that's number seven, okay, so I'll check one by that. Okay, number eight. Elevator number two, this is a savings of one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, so it's significant.
Take the elevator.
You don't want the elevator, for a hundred and thirty-five thousand.
No, I'd rather get the new building and then worry about an elevator. A ramp or a lift.
Well, you know, put a check mark there, but technically, we have to kind of say, so is everyone in the police chiefs?
You want me to vote for Bill Mary?
We only need three say to drop it, you wanna drop it?
Drop it?
Okay. Gary, you wanna keep it?
Wait, we're accepting alternative eight.
We're accepting alternative eight.
We're getting rid of elevator number two.
I'm in favor of that, yes.
Bill, you wanna give a bill?
You have a bill. Recommendation.
I want to talk about this, the ballistic glazing, it's a sixty thousand dollar option, okay? I want to, I want you to explain clearly again, so you've heard, heard kind of different things. What I'm understanding is that these are to take areas where we had see-through ballistic windows and change them to glass block windows, is that really what you're saying?
So there are the windows, there are the windows on the outside of the building that are the higher windows, they would be see-through with the ballistic glazing compared to the block glass, correct, Dean?
Correct.
Okay, and so the glass block lets in less light than this other one, I would assume.
You won't see outside, you'll just have light coming through, but it'll be black glass.
Where, just because I don't know the design, what areas of the building does have these glass block, potential glass block windows instead of?
Can you bring that up, Dean, are you able to do that? So, for example, in, in the admin area, the admin area on the first floor, there are glass windows that are high. They will be replaced with the block glass instead of glass that you can see through with the glazing.
Are they above height of people sitting, anybody looking around anyway?
So on the outside, because we're FEMA plus three, they're gonna be very high. On the inside, they will be, I don't know, Dean, maybe five feet off the floor?
They're still fairly high, but hold up, I'll, let me see if I can share the elevations with you guys. One second.
So what I'm envisioning is you can see the sky, you can see the clouds if it was ballistic, but otherwise, it's gonna be like the bathroom windows.
Well, you can't say anything.
So interior, how high are these windows off the floor?
They're pretty high up off the floor, and that's just because usually for police departments, we try to elevate those up, just so they're out of line of sight, but I believe it's about five feet off the floor. So they're up there quite a bit.
I say we drop it.
I just want to see what it's gonna look like, what it looks like outside and inside, if you can bring up the elevations.
And there was, at one time, a homeland security grant that would do glass for police areas?
Dean, is this glass block, is that what you're talking about?
Correct.
Okay, I know exactly, I've seen it in homes. Doesn't look bad, I mean, but you're not gonna see, you'll just filter light, that's what you'll get.
Correct.
It's kind of gloomy.
Yeah.
If you can bring it up.
So, yeah, if you can see the screen.
Can you just zoom in to the area so we can see it?
Yes. So it's all these window types right here, F, A.
On the lower level.
Correct.
Lower level, okay.
But that would include the facade of the building?
On the first floor, all the windows there would either be block glass or regular glass with a glazing on them for bulletproofing.
But it includes the front facade of the building?
It would include everything on the front, yeah.
But they're bulletproof regardless.
What I'm talking about though is, is on your first floor, on the front of the building, you're gonna have glass block windows.
Yeah.
Aesthetically, I don't want, I don't like that.
I mean, you can see on the front of the building there where the front doors are, the, the stuff on either side would be either glazed or it'd be block.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I just, this, this is one thing I don't.
If those are the only two choices, then I'd rather be glazed, personally.
That's where I'm at.
For our employees, it's gonna let more light in.
You're gonna be able to see outside.
You're gonna see out.
And it's also makes it more welcoming, I know this is, I keep using the town home thing, we don't want to look like a forbidding place that nobody wants to come in and get help or interact with us.
All right.
I'm in favor of it.
Of dropping it?
No, no, I'm in favor of having it, accepting that alternative.
You want to accept it?
Yes, I do, I, I could make a different decision on every one of these alternatives, if we had a clear financial picture. This is about cost. You know, let's get on paper the ability to pay for this, either both phases at once or just one phase, and then we can go back and make a rational decision about each of these alternatives. This just does not work for me, my answer is, is take all of the alternatives, cut as much cost as we can, and see where we are. If we have enough money, we can add some of them back.
So.
That's, that's my view, I mean, that's not the process we follow, that's my view.
I respect, I respect your position. So alternative ten is the prevailing wages to save with this bid are seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars, if it were Costello. I just want to understand, some of the grant money required prevailing wages and some didn't.
Correct.
How much of our grant money requires prevailing wages?
All the state.
Four.
So.
It's not even option.
It's not an option, yeah.
It's just an illustration.
Yeah, we're not gonna give away, give back four million to save seven hundred.
But prevailing wages, phase two.
Is a savings.
Is a savings.
Because we did know, we do know that the grant, the money coming from Sussex County towards EMS, EMS does not require prevailing wages.
Does, does anyone have a reason why we would, why we would not accept alternative eleven for a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars?
No, we would.
Anyone, okay, all right.
And Fred, we can do both, we can do it one way and then another way?
Yep.
Love it.
So, what I have is, as a, a three or more people, for alternative one for one hundred and five thousand.
Right.
Alternative four for one hundred and ten thousand. Alternative six for nine thousand. Alternative seven for nineteen thousand. Alternative eight for one hundred and thirty-five thousand. Alternative eleven for one hundred and forty-five thousand.
Oh, a hundred, a hundred and forty-five thousand?
And I'm trusting the calculator next to me.
Four thirty-eight plus one forty-five.
Five twenty-three.
Five eighty-three.
Not the sixty.
Who, was the glazing, I thought we were taking that out.
Five hundred and twenty-three thousand.
I did not, I did not think we were going towards the block, we were gonna keep the ballistic glass.
I haven't, I didn't, I didn't put that in that list.
He didn't list that one. But it's five hundred and twenty-three thousand there.
Yep.
Okay. So it's five hundred and twenty-three thousand savings.
All right, so if we just do phase one, nine, nine point four minus five point three.
Well, no, you can't take the whole five twenty-three, because one hundred and forty-five is for phase two.
Right.
Oh, prevailing wages, yeah.
So it'd be, it's three seventy-eight. Three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, so.
All right, so nine point four minus, what did we say?
Three seventy-eight. That's down, close to nine.
Yeah. Rounding error, it's nine, it's nine mil. We have nine million, so we can pay for nine million.
So, and if, if we proceed with phase two, important thing is obviously knowing the total money, coincidentally, it's close to ten, the ten-seven you actually put in your summary email, but that's just a lucky coincidence.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah. But it's close to ten-sevens, the total, total monies we're looking for, but there are costs that aren't included in that.
Well, you would have to take the one thirty-five out of the one-six, so you have.
No, we ended up doing both phases.
Right. But you'd still take the one thirty-five out.
But, yeah.
So it comes to ten-four-six-five in both phases, right?
Well, we were doing it in two different ways, so then nine point four-eight, we took the five.
Three seventy-eight off.
Off, and then we took the one forty-five off of the one point six.
Wait, I'm.
Just for fun.
I don't know what I did, so there would be the three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars in savings, right? And how it go?
On phase one.
Phase one.
And then?
Hundred and thirty-five thousand on phase two.
And then how would that go to?
The total, you're trying to find the to, she's trying to find the total for both phases, is what she's looking for.
I gotta get a better calculator going here.
So phase two will cost us about one point two. One point one.
She's looking for a total for her article.
So nine plus one point one, ten point one now.
So wait a minute, the base, the, it's eleven oh eighty minus five twenty-three.
It's probably the easiest way to do it.
Sounds like ten.
Ten five fifty-seven.
Ten-six.
Ten five five seven.
Ten five five seven.
Okay, that is, with the alternates accepted, that is the base bid for phases one and two, with the alternatives that three or more of us agree on, okay? So, on a rough order of magnitude, we're still short about the same amount of money if we were to do both phases as we got from our recommendation, if the needle hasn't moved that much on this, okay? I want to go through.
I like the, this, you know, discussion on holding off on phase two, like your suggestion originally, for the next fourteen months, well, you know, now we can see if we can come up with some federal money or some more county money to help pay for phase two. We may or may not, I mean, that's, that's, I mean, I know we're punting a decision into the future, but it gives us some time to hopefully raise some more money.
So, my issue with that, right now they're expecting us to sign phase one and phase two at the same time and agree to it. If we only sign phase one, then phase two goes away.
And also, to add to that, one million of the million, that one million of the dollars that we have is for phase two, so we can't spend it for phase one, it has to go to phase two.
It wouldn't even correct. I don't think we'd, we'd even get half those funds to burn over to the MOU until phase two began.
Right.
Then they're half upon completion.
Yes, so the gap with phase two, because they're pricing it on six, is six hundred thousand dollars, when you consider the money we're getting, okay? So it's, there's a significant incentive incumbent upon us on the town to make, get this phase two figured out because of how low the price is after the million dollars, I'm not, not disputing that. But the fact is, we still have a gap, and what we're at, because the contractor's not doing any of the projects together, I mean, phase two doesn't start until phase one's done and moved in.
Right.
I did not anticipate this contractor giving us grief, and what I'd like to do is I'd like to make a motion for exactly how I'd like this worked. Anyone else?
Whoa, hold on.
I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a motion.
Oh, oh, okay.
Okay, and I would like to motion that we approve the recommended vendor, Costello, for both phases, subject to the vendor approving a term in the contract to allow the town to opt out of phase two at any point prior to March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. The alternative one include the alternatives specified as numbers one, four, six, seven, eight, and eleven. They have until February tenth to accept this change.
I think it's fair.
If you think it's fair, then you would second the motion, and then we can open for conversation.
I second that motion.
So, is there any chance that either of our resources would have any comment on the practical effect of that motion, or any concerns?
Yeah, I'll, I'll give you just a quick synopsis. Dean, can I think elaborate more on this than I can? If you, if you take phase two off the table right now, you have sixty days to accept that bid from the day that it was submitted, so you're, we're gonna lose that bid. That'll be gone, so any, any numbers that you have right now in front of you are gone. That will likely have to go out and be rebid again, if in the future you decide you want to go with phase two. I don't think you're gonna be able to lock in to that bid.
Did you understand my motion clearly? My motion clearly is that we accept the contract for phases one and two, but that they have to put a term in the contract that we can later opt out of phase two prior to March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six, which is well before they would start that work.
I understand that, but I don't think that's how it went out to bid.
It isn't, that isn't what it is, they would have to put, they would have to accept that change.
They could say that. They can, and I'll defer to the legal opinion on that, but you had already put it out to all contractors under those terms, now you're changing the terms for just one contractor.
If they don't accept the terms, we could come into a meeting in February and decide what we want to do at that point.
Understood, just thought I'd interject.
No, thank you for your comments.
We discussed this at a roundtable, and there was a question about what it takes for a vendor to come in and get the materials in order, all these things in effect. And like, our concern was, considering our environment and cost of materials, vendors usually want to come in and lease lock-in contracts, because it may take a long time to get equipment. And we weren't sure how that would be considered. If we did exactly what you just said, Commissioner J, excuse me, I'll lose my, my voice. Commissioner Jocinski, I, I don't know if that's a practical issue or something that they would say, you know, that we're gonna have a hard time accepting that. But it, it's a choice that they would have to make, and we'd probably have to come back again. My recommendation.
I agree that this is a choice they have to make.
Let me, let me, let me interject here. I, my, my thought process is, there's a few different things coming to mind. With the new administration in the White House and the proposed tariffs, I don't know what, we don't know what the cost structure's gonna be in six months for anything, well, if you look at Canada, twenty-five percent, and most of your wood products are coming out of, out of Canada. So, if we don't sign up for phase one and phase two, I think we're gonna, we open ourselves up for a can of worms in the future. My reading of the room, I believe that Commissioner Persinger is not comfortable in terms of moving forward with any, with deciding upon this right now. But what I was, what I'm contemplating, Dave, is, I know that we have a second, so I don't, this is part of the discussion, is, is there a way that we can agree upon that Costello is the contractor if we decide that we're going to move forward with this project right now? Right? Because if not, then we're gonna have to go for rebid anyway out in the future. If it is Costello that we can, that we can vote on tonight, can we spend, can we ask for two weeks with that contractor and come back here in two weeks with more numbers being known and further clarification on some of these numbers, so that we can come back in two weeks and decide upon moving forward on this project, period?
So, part of why, and I.
In addition to asking about your.
Part, part of why I came up with this idea, is I told you guys I want to get to yes today.
Right.
There are things that I haven't even brought up that I, I think are still kind of squirrely in terms of things that we're gonna need to spend money on, things like that in the future, and how much certain things are gonna cost, does it agree with the police station, specialized type things that have to go into it? What are we gonna do with our IT equipment, are we gonna buy new, are we gonna move it? Cabling for IT, you know, there's a lot of different things that we need to get figured out, and that candidly, I, I don't think we really know what the number is today, and I don't know that we know what the number is in two weeks either, okay? And, so for me to get to yes on this, I have to have a level of protection, and that And that protection level is that 600,000 dollar gap between the million subsidy and the million seven that they're saying it costs and us spending a year to get all these types of things figured out and make sure that we're on solid ground before we are locked in to building the EMS and Sally Court. That's, that's where I'm coming from.
So where I'm coming from is that if we agree, remember the Agenda I of States, discuss and possibly vote to approve a bid submission for the construction of the new town hall and police station project. We can approve the bid submission by Costello. We don't necessarily signing the contract, we can approve theirs as the predominant bid submission. I disagree from the standpoint that if we could get, if we could understand from Commissioner Persinger's numbers, a solid number that we're coming to and what those numbers are, I have a tough time not going forward with, with, with section, with number Phase 2 because of the million coming from Sussex, because of the possibility of getting more out of Sussex, and because the 145,000 savings on the rappelling wages. So theoretically, we'd be getting the Sally Court and the barracks for 455,000 dollars. It would be.
Commissioner Persinger probably, I'm not going to speak for you, but he's kind of made it clear. I think he feels strongly that there's a lot on the financial side of this that needs more specificity in terms of where things are going to be. And I, while I don't necessarily agree with him on all the things, I definitely agree that there's, there's a very significant amount of numbers in there. And I think it's going to take us a fair amount of time to know what those numbers are for some of these things. We're just not going to know them right now. And from a negotiating and leverage point of view, I think the fact that we have an op, we would have an opt-out for a period of a year is going to incent people strongly, both outside the town and inside the town, to make sure that we can make this work financially so that we get that Phase 2, that we don't say, hey, we're not going to be able to do this.
By making a motion right now to accept Costello as our bid submission gives us the ability to negotiate that over the next two weeks. And why I'm saying that is because I'd like to bring us back here in two weeks where we have these numbers.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
I don't understand, what are we going to get in two weeks?
We're not going to approve of, I don't think we're going to get this done tonight, is what I'm saying. But if we ba, if we basically make a decision tonight and vote to accept the bid pending further considerations for further contracts from Costello, then we have time to answer your question regarding this opt-out, additional cost savings that we might be able to gain that were part of the alternatives.
So what I would tell you from my motion is if Costello chooses, which they're free to choose, to not agree to give us an opt-out after 14 months on Phase 2, if they choose to do it that way, we only gave them until February 10th. So we can have a meeting scheduled for immediately after that to decide what we're going to do. And that decision could very likely be around Harkins, okay? That decision in two weeks if they choose that they're not going to allow us to do that. And we'd be free, we'd be free to do that because they've rejected the fact that we accepted their contract with that changed term.
Commissioner Persinger.
Yeah, I, in terms of approving or voting to say that Costello should be the contractor, I'm, I'm kind of not indifferent, but I don't have a substantive basis on which to choose among these contractors. I mean, I, I take the recommendations we get from, from Code Solutions and from, from GMB. I know GMB's recommendation was with some reservation because they don't have any specific experience, but they clearly have some relevant experience in Montgomery County, which happens to be my area of permanent residence. I, I'm just not sure why the contractor would agree to the, to your proposal. You know, I, I just don't see why it would be in their interest to do so. I, I'm okay with voting to select Costello as the contractor, as long as it's clear that we're not making any specific, we're not signing any documents, we're not making any specific.
Correct.
Doesn't create any specific obligation for us, either for Phase 1 or Phase 2. My, again, my major problem is, we need to understand what our financial resources are, and we don't have a clear picture of that yet. I mean, we, you know, it blows my mind that we're talking about 1.4 million dollars that hasn't been allocated somewhere. I, I understand, but you know, it's.
I, I understand your point.
That's just, that's just an illustration of, of not having a clear picture of what our financial resources are. We need to nail that down, and then we can make some more decisions about this.
So, from my perspective, once you've told someone they're selected, you lose leverage. You just do. Why would we do that until we know we're going to get what we want?
I'm, I'm fine with that too, you know.
My understanding is legally, it's not like, we, we can't change the bid process unless we redo the whole bid process with the option.
Fred, is, was my motion, does it?
Let me.
Okay, I'm sorry.
If we were to accept Costello for further consideration, that doesn't mean that we're going to accept the contract, that we're signing the contract. We could separate those two things. We could name them as the pending additional elements.
We're leaning that way, they need to come in, talk to us, and let's see.
But we can't talk to them about any additional things unless they are the, the contract, if I heard you correctly, that we accept. Because it's not fair to the other, I mean.
It's not fair to everybody.
Right, I, I'm not, I'm not, can I, can I ask the question of Commissioner Jocinski about his motion?
You can do whatever you want.
So, so what, what would be the difference between awarding the contract to Costello and then saying, six months from now, nine months from now, we don't want Phase 2? I mean, if, if we were to do that, we, we, we wouldn't have their commitment at the, at the price they, they offered us to build Phase 2. And we'd have to put that out to bid at a later date if we chose to. But question for, for Dean, I mean, are we obligated? I mean, is, is there, is there Phase 2 commitment to us somehow based on, on Phase 1? I mean, could, could we not say in six or eight months, we can't find the money we hoped to find, and we don't, we're not going to be able to go forward with Phase 2 and save ourselves 600,000 dollars or 450,000 dollars? That, that's my question. I mean, is that not the same thing? It's what you're suggesting essentially.
Get your point.
As I say, you are very well correcting that assumption. If you go ahead and lock in Phase 1 and 2, say, six months, eight months, however months down the road, you decide, we don't have that money, we're not going to do it, you can definitely table it and then ask contractor not to pursue that and get a credit back for that. Otherwise, right now, for the base bid that they have submitted, you have 60 days locked into it. If you decide not going with the second phase now, that's fine, but you're going to have to rebid it out past that 60 days. There's the chance.
I want to be crystal clear about this, that you were saying that there is either a term in the contract that says that we can notify them that we're not proceeding with Phase 2, but there is, that, that is a term in the, in the proposed bid that we have the option to do that.
Correct. You have 60 days to accept the bid, and they're locked into it.
That's what I'm talking about. I'm talking about.
Let him finish.
Go.
I'm sorry.
The 60 days is a totally different issue on accepting the bid. I'm talking about after, if we sign a contract with them, we accept the bid and we sign a contract them for Phase 1 and 2, that the contract has a term in it that we could basically say, don't do Phase 2, and there will be no penalty.
Correct. You can very well put that in, it's negotiable.
Yep, that, that is what was in my motion, so it's the same thing.
That's what I meant, yeah.
Yeah, it's the same thing as my motion, which is an opt-out clause. If it's in the contract already, it really doesn't matter.
I mean, there, there may be some run-up period where they need notice, but if we hammer that down as to what that is, then it seems to me we could accept this and still have the insurance, if you will, that.
When we get to contract phase.
We could begin into the negotiation with them at some point, they can counter and say, you know, we can do it in such and such a time. There's going to be a negotiation here as well.
Well, I'm not, I'm not fixed on it being March 31, 2026. But I, but I don't want to see it be in three months either, you know? So I, I, I need to kind of understand what that is. I mean, I don't, I don't know enough about the municipal bid process. I mean, they, they gave us, you know, their detailed bids, but, you know, candidly, I relied more on the summer than their, than their detail, right, when I went through this. So their, their bid is not the contract, the contract's going to be separate from that. Is that correct?
Right.
So, so I don't see why there's any issue with a motion that requires that the contract include an opt-out clause on Phase 2. I mean, that's, that's.
I'm not sure, it's just not. They don't want to have, I mean, you know, if you're them, you don't want to have somebody who's not going to be able to pay you.
It's not clear to me that Fred's and, and David's ideas are the same. I mean, if, if we get into a contract and we, Phase 2 is part of it, and as Jim said, you know, there, there may be some economies for the contractor, they may have already purchased materials for Phase 2. So, you know.
That's the other issue.
The contractor at that point is going to say, well, you owe us for this, so we're not going to be saving, you know, all of that money. There's some amount of money. There may be some other charges too, in preparation for Phase 2, that they may recur. So I'm not sure that your ideas are the same thing.
Well, that, I mean, I did, I did mean to say that accounting for some period of run-up for Phase 2, you know, we, we're not going to, we wouldn't be able to terminate Phase 2 at no cost at, at the last second. But you could change, you could, you make change orders during the process.
No, I, I know.
And this could be essentially a big change order, that we're not going to be able to finance Phase 2.
But to your point, Fred, that could be, if we were, if somebody was to make a motion to accept Costello as our potential contractor, pending contract negotiation, then we could move forward with having those conversations with Costello to see if they would be willing to what that period of time would be.
I'm going to amend my motion slightly, okay? So I'd like to amend, and Paul wasn't, decided he will accept this.
I'm listening.
Motion to approve the recommended vendor, Costello, for both phases, subject to the vendor during contract negotiations, agreeing to a term in the contract that's mutually agreeable with the town and the vendor for a, the town have a deadline to, if they want to opt out of Phase 2. And.
Including all negotiation, but not, I understand how you want to include that, but maybe other elements of the negotiation that we may want to get into. So I would not, that, want that to be the only court of negotiation with Costello.
So, motion to approve the recommended vendor, Costello, for both phases, subject to the vendor approving contract terms that are acceptable to the town to include a deadline for deciding if we no longer wish to do Phase 2.
I say we get them in here and see what we can agree to.
You know, you have to.
I'll second it, yes.
The question, the question that they're going to ask is, why are they doing that? Well, because of funding, correct?
Right.
So why don't we include in that language, or just, it's an appropriation issue.
We don't, we don't.
But Mr. Deedee's.
No.
We don't expect that in a motion because we can add that as part of our contract negotiation with both part of the motion.
I guess, of course, right, how much time do you want to give them?
Well, we're going to need them to tell us that. I mean, we're going to need to tell, that's going to, that's going to be a function of them saying, by a certain date it'll be too late, you will have already started to incur costs. So we'll have that discussion, and then you, you all will decide whether that is sufficient. You know, if they, if they say they need to know in 60 days from now, you're going to say, well, that's not, that's not beneficial to us. But if they say you can have 12 months to figure that out, well, that might help you line up your finance.
Might be sufficient.
Yep. So I have a motion?
Second.
Do I have a second? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Reluctantly, aye.
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 All right. What I'd like for us to do, if everyone's reluctant.
Isn't that a valid vote?
No.
We dragged it across the line.
I'm going to say yes, but I don't want to. Let me tell you why. Go ahead, Gary. So what I'd like for us to do, if everyone's agreeable to this, is to contact, for the town hall, for the town, to contact Costello, let them know that our decision is to, to choose them, you know, pending contract negotiation, and to see if they would be amenable, if everyone agrees, to a possible here meeting with us to talk about the project a little in detail two weeks from now, which would be February 4.
The Finance Committee is scheduled to meet from 3 to 5 here on the 14th.
We can do it at 5, then.
Okay, just.
Happy Valentine's Day.
Happy Valentine's.
That's okay, y'all are my, y'all are my favorite Valentines, let's do it.
All right, I don't want, we don't necessarily depress, I mean, my, I would really like to get the financing issues thought through and figured out, even if it is our good asker here going back up to the state and seeing how much more money he can get out of the state, other areas that we can hit. It may not be viable in two weeks, but I believe the 21st is our meeting, our next council meeting.
It is.
That is correct.
That's a big budget meeting.
And I'd also like to still figure out the 1.4 million. That's, that's important.
For sure.
That's a lot of money.
I'm not refuting this all, I just look at the fund balance, and I don't need a comment right now, I just, can we, when, is it 5 o'clock? I mean, I'm, I'm, my wife's not going to kill me if I miss Valentine's Day, I know that.
We can do it before? It's, I'm thinking of, it's, it's kind of hard to commit other people to that date for Valentine's Day.
Do you want to meet before?
Finance is meeting 3, we can get together at 2.
I don't think this is going to be an hour meeting.
I think I can manage the 14th if that turns out, I think. My, my wife may kill me, but for.
Oh, Mary will understand.
We could do it 1 o'clock on the 14th.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Noon, we can do.
Is the Finance Committee really going to need two hours?
This will be Iris's first time sc, pulling the whole committee together, discuss the budget proposals.
All right.
Yes.
Let's tentatively, right now, schedule 15, the 14th at 5 o'clock. If, if there's any real opposition, please let me know, and we'll, we'll seek an alternative name. All right.
Tina's going to kill me.
Tina's going to kill you, Tina's always going to kill you, Paul. Right, we voted on that, given the length of time, I'm going to ask for a motion, if everyone agrees, to table items D and G.
Okay.
I'll motion that. To the next meeting. But.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And also, just as a note, because Kate will keep me on, on task for this, I'd also like to, if I can do this, rather strike E and F, to not table it, but just kill it for future.
Well, what do we need to bring it up as a? So tabling something is actually a recognized way of killing something.
Well, she's told me that's not, I'm just kicking the can down the road from a town